Citizen comment requests need to be turned in prior to the start of the meeting to determine if five minutes per speaker needs to be reduced. In order for all requests to be heard, the blue speaker request cards can be found in the vestibule and turned into the clerk. We're about to get started. Please silence your cell phones. Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. I'll call the meeting's order at six thirty. Citizens who have requested to address the council will be called on at the appropriate time to make your comments. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor Schwartz. All council are present.
Thank you, Tamara. This time Judy Madewell will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Does any council member wish to move any consent agenda item to a business item for individual discussion and vote or make other modifications?
Yes, I'd like to move four point one sleep center closure just transition plans and five point oh. Which is regulations on Narcan for city properties on ordinance three zero seven two.
To where?
Move those to a further discussion. Well, there are this is specific remove them from the consent agenda to discuss prior to the time of the council votes.
Only these.
Oh, A and B old business. Never mind.
Okay. I am going to make one change to the agenda, which is to move the public hearing number one, which is Western Avenue vacate ordinance. To after item number six in old business, which is the Sand Dunes wastewater treatment facility. So we will deal with that at the last of the meeting, if that's all right with everyone. Okay. If everybody's okay with that, I would accept a motion to approve the agenda with that change.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we did receive, I think, twelve citizens comments cards tonight, so we will reduce the speaking time to two minutes this evening. Please refrain from applause or disruption in between speakers or during. We do have a lot of comments to get through this evening, so. I would like to keep it as brief as possible. Thank you. First up, we have a Paul Nowlin. And please state your name and city of, yes, state your name and city of residence for the record, please.
My name is Paul Nowlin. I reside in Moses Lake, Washington. And through the chair, I'd like to speak to all the council members. As a council person, your position is meant to serve the community and we thank you for your service. Your job is to carry out the will of the majority. You abuse your power if you only listen to the few. You lack honor if you follow your own desires. And you fail your position if you decide who is a member of this community. Even if you base that on the square footage of lumber our community members own. Everyone within the city. Are our community. Everyone within the city are your neighbors. And I'd ask you to please act accordingly hereforth. Recently, you had us gather in this room, break into groups and discuss how to guide your hand. Despite common themes at every table in this room, every group. Many of them were ignored. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Debbie Doran Martinez.
Debbie Doran Martinez, Moses Lake. And I just wanted to, I saw Narcan on the agenda. I just wanted to come up and talk about how we've elected you to set good policy to move our community forward in a good way. And I think the conversations that I have had and listened to you in the discussions of the Narcan machine or another. Drug that would do the same type of thing in the future. Not being located at the library is the direction our community does need to go. I'm not saying that we shouldn't have those machines in our community. I just don't feel the public library is the appropriate place for it. So I would hope that you would set good policy to carry our community into the future with that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Teresa Adkinson. Sorry, I did say you wanted to speak at the time of the agenda.
Yeah, I could speak now or I can wait until the agenda item.
Probably.
Yeah, that'd be my preference.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Several of those. Mr. John Chapman.
And I could table or I can go now. Is there a preference because I'm going to be speaking around the Narcan piece?
Well, since we're actually, I will probably end up just calling everybody back since we're already started talking.
All right, well, all right, let's jump in. All right, John Chapman, I'm from the city of Winachia. I'm also the executive director for Thriving Together. Our central Washington, I'm going to read a little bit of what's going to be coming from a press release later today and then just speak kind of off the cuff. So really following community conversations, Thirving Together as a regional nonprofit dedicated to advancing health and wellbeing has announced, and this will be announced tonight. It's decision to remove the Narcan vending machine from the Moses Lake Public Library. Our primary goal has always been clear to save lives by ensuring equitable access to opioid overdose reversal medication. It was never intent to create controversy or provide over providing this life-saving medication in this community. We remain committed to the work in partnership with city officials, community members and local organizations to find an alternative path forward. And what I would really say is it's really been based on discussions. I've recognized that really what is true in all these discussions is. Everyone knows that opioid addiction is a terrible disease that we need to, as a community, come together and figure out how to solve. We all recognize that Narcan as a life-saving medication is one of those ways. To keep people going as we get them into recovery and we get them connected to services. Sometimes it may take vocal times, but we're committed to doing that. I recognize there was disagreement over the placement of the machine and we didn't want that disagreement to. Have issues with our partnership to address those bigger issues. And so we have had conversations with city staff, elected officials, community members. And we decided at this point in time to keep a focus on that primary discussion. That we will remove the machine from the library in the hopes that we can continue to focus on how we are able to do distribution of Narcan. In the city of Moses Lake, in a different method or in connection in other ways. We have in past operated on city property with agreement and locations. And so our hope moving forward is really that the council, because of the move of the library, will choose not to. Will choose to on table to ordinance tonight and allow this work to continue with the partners that is doing this work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Jose. I'm sorry, I can't pronounce, I can't read the last, Yurasty, thank you.
I believe that. As they're shifting in our, in our community, we need to stand.
Sir, would you mind stating your name and city of residence?
Correct. My name is Jose Yurasty. I'm a local pastor here in Moses Lake. So, you know, I believe that the Narcans are important and moving them from where they are. For the protection of our children and our community is very important. Every life does matter and I do believe that our local churches and leadership within our communities need to come together. And have not only have resources for, for the addictive, but also the families. So we just want you guys to know that we're praying however we can assist and be there in this transition. We're here. You can find us on social media, reach out to us. You have our email. And we're willing to go above and beyond. I come from recovery. I was over twenty years in addiction and homeless, living on the streets. And we planted a church here in Moses Lake two years ago. And we are actively working with the Oxford Homes with men in recovery at this moment. We've seen a lot of, a lot of young men and a lot of families be restored these last two years since we planted our church here in Moses Lake. So we just want you to know that we're here. We, whatever you need from us, we are willing to go the extra mile, come together, pray together with our local pastors and some of. Those that are already serving in our community and we need to find somebody that's going to be out in the mission field. Someone that has the heart that will be able to run and lead these ministries because the Lord has to be in all that we do. We can work and we can work, but we will work in vain if the Holy Spirit is not involved in the center of what we are doing. Change comes from the presence of God. And I'm a living proof. When you look at me, you're looking at a family of drug addicts, people that have been in prison, in and out of prison. And there is hope for us. And so whatever you guys need from us, we're here and we're here to partner with those that have the heart. And whoever has that heart, they have to have the heart for people, not just money.
Thank you. Pamela Ackerman. Oh, sorry. Excuse me, sir. Deanna Martinez actually has a question for you.
Thank you for your time. I was just curious what church you represent? Or do you?
Light Church. Yes, we have, yeah. So we have Light Church three, three sixteen. And we are located here in Moses Lake and Warden Assembly in, in Warden.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that, Deanna. Okay, next up, we have Pamela Ackerman.
Pamela Ackerman, Moses Lake. I was actually asked to come up and speak here tonight as someone who works in the medical field. And even though it's not my opinion, I've spoken to several coworkers and I'm active online. And it does seem to be the overriding opinion that the library is not a good place for the Narcan machine. I would like to say that I think that it's very important that it be somewhere that it's easily accessible. The window. Between the time a person begins to overdose and the time that they expire depends upon the opioid they have ingested. Specifically referring to fentanyl, that window is very small. And fentanyl is the overriding problem drug in our area right now. So I would ask you to please consider not disallowing Narcan machines on city property. Because the homeless people that live here are our citizens and the data has shown that approximately ninety-seven percent of them are from here. Even if you ship them out, they're going to come back because this is home. In relation to the plan moving forward for the, after the closure of the sleep center. I feel like. What's happening is that the initial plan is moving forward in spite of an overwhelming sentiment of wanting to find better solutions. For our homeless community and that very much concerns me. So. Trying to think. Oh, and as far as the hospital goes, we cannot have a Narcan machine there because we already have Narcon, Narcan, excuse me, there. And we dispense it as necessary when people come in. So I guess my biggest plea this evening is to please reconsider banning them on, on a public property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackerman. Oh, sorry, we do have a question for you real quickly, if you don't mind.
You said Narcan is available at the hospital. Is it free?
Um, when we give it to people that are brought in, it is probably put on their bill. But it can be dispensed. Free of charge. By our pharmacy. That is not something that they want people lining up to get because we absorb the cost of that.
Who absorbs the cost of it with the other machines?
Who absorbs the cost of it?
I mean, if, if, if we're, if, if the interest is providing it for free. I guess I don't understand why the hospital doesn't provide it for free.
Well, because we're in the business of care, not distribution.
That's a two-edged sword.
Well, that is the stance of our hospital at the moment.
All right, thank you.
Anything else?
Okay, I, at the side, we'll just continue since there are so many comments about Narcan and we've already started. Next up, Matthew Pollak. You good? Okay, Dr. Natalie Pollak.
Hi, my name is Dr. Natalie Pollak. Sorry, that's really loud. I'm a board certified pediatrician of eighteen years experience and I've practiced in Moses Lake for sixteen years. I came here to talk to you guys about Narcan, Narcan's life-saving properties and the importance of access to it in our community. I strongly urge against adopting the proposed policy that would prohibit Narcan distribution on city property. I was really excited to hear that Narcan was going to be readily available at the library in a central location in the community. Because I knew it would save lives and keep people in our community safe and healthy. Narcan is easy to administer. It's an opioid reversal agent that has been shown to save lives when given promptly in, in an opioid overdose. Narcan can be given safely to people of all ages from infants to elderly. This includes a child, an adolescent or young adult who may be unintentionally have taken an opioid. Narcan rapidly reverses the deadly effects of fentanyl or other opioids in minutes and can be easily administered as a nasal spray by anyone. If you think someone is overdosing, they should be given Narcan immediately to reverse the effects of the opioids, especially in small children who may have inadvertently been exposed. You should always give Narcan, even if you don't know what kind of drug a person took. Narcan only works for opioid overdoses, but there's no harm if you give it if you don't know what drug that they took. Once Narcan has been administered, a person wakes up within one to three minutes. EMS needs to be summoned, but the person's life can be saved. Narcan won't have any effect on someone who doesn't need it, so it's safe to give to someone. Narcan won't have any effect on someone who doesn't need it, so it's safe to give to someone. Even if they may have overdosed on opioids, or sorry, even if you don't know if they overdosed on opioids. And then research also shows that Narcan does not increase opioid. Drug use or riskier drug use, rather the studies show that access to Narcan can decrease opioid drug use in communities. When Narcan is administered in overdose, the person that's overdosing, they sober up very quickly and they lose their high, so they get kind of frustrated and upset. Plus they can be a little bit uncomfortable, but their life is saved. And because of this, I know a lot of people think that addicts are getting drawn to Narcan dispensers, but they're actually not. They usually try and stay away from them. And so it's really important to keep the people in our community safe by having Narcan available for elderly patients who maybe took an extra dose of their opioid pain medication. For a child who accidentally got into grandma's medications for all those reasons. So because of that, I urge you guys to keep Narcan. Able to be available on our, on our city property.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up we have Joseph Moriarty.
Joseph Moriarty, Moses Lake. A few topics I wanted to address today regarding overdoses in our community. It was posted. I believe yesterday that 18 lives have been lost so far this year. On pace to surpass last year's record breaking number. And, and I know that this kind of reveals a little bit how deadly fentanyl has become. In our community and, and with those that struggle with addiction. It seems to find its way laced in, in a variety of different drugs, and that's certainly a danger for those that are young and impressionable. And so prevention, I think, needs to be increased for the youth and the young adults regarding the dangers of a fentanyl. Also, we, we had a circumstance again with individuals wanting to go in to get detox. But the hindrance of owning a dog. Or an animal is, is significant. We, we have talked about locating fosters to take care of the animal for a short time. We do have a partner now in, in this region that's willing to. House animals. It's just a matter of getting the, the pet to that location. And then holding that animal there until the rehabilitation is completed. And so doors are opening. And I recognize several people willing to stand up in the community that, that want to contribute. And I, I think it, it reveals what, what Pastor Joey shared. There, there's countless success stories. And I work with that community and I'm familiar with just that. And, and that's what we want to focus on is introducing solutions. Continuing building relationships. Within and outside our, our, our community. And, and really recognizing that we can make a great difference to those who are unhoused. But it's going to take a significant effort and I think we can do it together. Any questions? Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, Sarah Dela Cruz. Oh, okay, we will pretend like I didn't call her name. Oh, okay, sorry. Sorry, Miss Dela Cruz. I didn't try to do it. I'm so sorry.
Good evening. You guys have had a lot of comments tonight. Mine is not about Narcan. It's good to see you all. First, I wanted to begin by sincerely apologizing to all of you if anyone has felt that my petition was personal. It's not in any way. It was never my intention. It has always been just to where raise awareness of how vital a library is. I understand there's the Narcan thing. That's totally completely different than what I'm asking about. So the reason I'm here tonight is I would like to respectfully ask that as a council, play some public record what was discussed at the retreat. I understand that you don't have to. I'm not asking you to say you're for or against it. I'm just asking that because there was only a few of us at the retreat and heard what was said. That on public record as a group, you just say what your next step is, which is the building thing and meeting with the library. That's all I'm asking. And you don't have to, like I've been told, you don't have to, but that's pretty much the only reason I'm here is that you declare what you guys decided on public record so that. People on Facebook will stop like thinking whatever it is. So that's it. Thank you for transparency and for your continued service and good luck with the Narcan.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I mean, I, I would be amenable to sharing the record from that discussion if we could get our. Public relations team to put that together. That would be great and it would be available, maybe if we could post it on Facebook. Great. Teresa, is it okay if you go ahead now? Just sorry, the number of comments, hopefully you understand. I think we've all got it in our mind right now.
We have a pretty good understanding of why I'm here. So Teresa Atkinson, I am, I live in Moses Lake and I am the administrator of the Grant County Health District. Which is your public health agency, health department for Grant County. I am here tonight to ask you to please table or reconsider the ordinance that you have put forward regarding the Narcan vending machine. I too have had many conversations across the community around the importance of Narcan. I've heard you speak to the importance of Narcan. I am concerned about unintended consequences that could be in that policy. We work closely with the farmer's market. For awareness events and oftentimes we're asked to bring Narcan. So then that's on, that's in a city park. And so just asking, you know, for that, that latitude, I, I love to hear people that are in recovery. I get the opportunity to talk with them, to see them. And I always have that vision in my mind of what they once looked like and appeared like. And so when I see our people that are impacted by drugs. I'm thinking about what they looked like before. I'm thinking about their mom and how their mom must be so worried about them. Because I get to see how beautiful they are in recovery and that's really what we're trying to do is give them lifesaving medication. Until we can get them in there. And I will just end with, I had a conversation today with one of my employees. She's young, she's energetic around these harm reduction activities and she met with one of her clients at the sleep center. And she was talking about how she's got housing and she's got a job and she's on her way to her own recovery. And yeah, it takes a lot of failed attempts and there's a lot of rebound situations, but please don't limit our ability. You asked. That we do public health and you do your community service, so just don't hinder that ability for us to do that work. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, it does look like I've got one more, but. Dan, do you probably, yeah, okay, thank you. All right, that does conclude the public comment section of the meeting. I do appreciate everyone's brevity and understanding that we had a lot of people that wanted to speak tonight, so. I do encourage any of you who have opinions you'd like to share to show up to the next meeting and we'd certainly hear them then. Thank you. Next item we have since we've moved the, the public hearing is item number two, the Eastlake Drive vacate ordinance. Excuse me, this is being postponed to July 8th, is that correct? Okay, so I am announcing that that vacate ordinance will be heard July 8. Which brings us to the consent agenda. All items listed are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. I'll take that motion now.
So moved.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second from Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion passes. Want to make a comment? I appreciate how brief the consent agenda was this evening. Thank you. Okay, old business item number 4.1 is the post, post sleep center closure transition plan. And that is being presented this evening by Ms. Vivian Ramsey. Vivian?
Thank you, Mayor. Since the council decided to close the sleep center, staff has been working on a plan. For the city's activities for post closure. And our housing manager, Liz Murillo, will be presenting that plan.
Thank you, Vivian. Well, council, we are back to talk about the final plan that is been presented in front of you. We can do a quick walkthrough of the background that we have here in front of you. This has been an ongoing discussion within the last few months regarding where the city wants to be and where we're headed regarding the operations of our sleep center. It was voted on April 18th by our city council in a majority favor to close the sleep center effective June 30th to align with the emergency housing grant that funds the sleep center. And so here we are discussing on what next steps are for the city. You see here that we've documented some of the public meetings and timeline and that's just for your reference to refresh yourselves on where we've been, where we've gone and where we're going. The, this transition plan is based on some fundamental pillars that include enforcing ordinance to promote public safety. Cleaning and maintaining lawful use of public spaces and coordinating outreach through structured partnerships and services. Some of the key components in this plan are, are ordinance revisions, which we will talk a little bit more. We have updated our camping ordinance as well as created a new ordinance to limit sitting, lying, and sleeping in public spaces. Again, we'll elaborate on that a little bit further on. As well as we have created some standard operating, operating procedures internally within interdepartmental coordination to make sure that everyone's on the same page between code enforcement. Our first responders, our police officers, to make sure that when we are responding to these encampments on public property, we're all consistent and using the same methods. Additionally, we are also looking at providing some tools and supporting private property owners when it comes to those properties that have historically had issues with encampments. And making sure that our, our residents and our property owners know the tools that are available to them when they run into these issues. Additionally, we're just making sure that as staff and as a city, we're ready for what the changes are that are being navigated and what's to come. A public awareness campaign as well, where we're working to send out messaging and educating our community on any questions they may have, as well as supporting the framework that we're listed here. So that includes any updates to the ordinance and making sure that our community understands them accurately, as well as the. Tools that are available for them on how to report when they see something, who they call, what scenarios occur. And so we are, we'll be working diligently as we roll out this plan and it gets adopted to make sure that we continue that engagement. And that people are aware of what's coming and answer any questions that our community may have. As we move on, we're talking about community mobilization. So really we're highlighting the efforts that are already happening in our community and making sure that we're supporting and showing. And highlighting the work that the nonprofits and other service providers in our community are having. And so our goal is to, first of all, fill up our resource page. So as a service provider, you have the access to fill out your contact information and any services that you provide via our community resource page. As well as we are hoping to highlight those agencies via our social media platforms, our websites, to make sure that our community is also aware of the services that are available here. And perhaps any availability for volunteer opportunities as well. And lastly, I want to talk about the incorporation of our town hall feedback. So we heard, we had a great turnout at our town hall, had a lot of great conversations. Some of the most common themes were increased visibility of what public rules are and what the ordinance state. So again, once the plan is adopted, we'll work out rolling out some new signage, making it more clear for our community. To understand what these rules are. Our attendees also emphasized that they were interested in making sure that people were also connected to services when they're being talked through. Through the removal from spaces. So we want to make sure that we highlight that as that was a big concern. So part of that work that we are doing is providing resource pamphlets to our police officers, I quote enforcement officers, and all of our community members to make sure that everyone has access to those services. As long as they're willing to access them. We're moving on to the OnePlus framework, which is a newer concept of what we decided to include in this transition plan. And this was a council-led strategy. Where our council gave us the guidance to provide some sort of supportive measure to be offered. So the concept here is that we want to look at having a provider of some sort. Provide real time 24/7 access to case management and transportation coordination. And a really big component of that that was highlighted by council was the accessibility point. So 24/7 access is a really crucial part of the OnePlus framework. We talked a little bit about the budget and expenses and what our estimated cost will look like for closing out the sleep center and finalizing that transition. So as you look here. We anticipated approximately $85,000 for closeout costs and that does include a 10% contingency, just to make sure that there's a buffer there. In case any undisclosed or other costs arise from closing sleep center. So here you'll see that we've got our ground lease payments that are through September that need to be taken care of. Restoring the site per lease agreement, which does include. You know, removing fixtures, removing paving and a couple other things on site. And so that will take some staff time as well as some resources to take care of that. Additionally, we have to return our leased restroom unit and office unit in the original condition that we have leased it. And so that I anticipate some costs that will arise from that. And then any other facility expenses that do exceed our final EHF, which is the emergency housing fund budget, to be included in those costs to close out as well. I like to reassure everyone that these are one-time closeout costs as we're transitioning of the operations of the sleep center. And this is to take care of the closure. Again, we are talking about some of the ordinance provisions that are in place. So again, we talk about chapter 9.18, which takes care of our camping, camping ordinance. If we have more questions regarding that, we can refer to our council, Catherine, to discuss more in depth, but I'll proceed with the rest of the plan for now. So again, to reiterate, we updated our camping ordinance section as well as created a new chapter in 9.2O that talks about sitting or lying on public sidewalks. As we roll out and adopt this plan per guidance from council, we will be making sure that we have as much information available to our community as possible. And that includes digital outreach, which is a dedicated homeless webpage on our website that will have all this information. As well as what are some of the most frequently asked questions so people have quick access to refer to some of the most common questions that get asked as to what's occurring. We will continue to post on our social media because that is the biggest intake that we see for people to receive information and we see the most engagement via social media. Where we'll be targeting our see something, say something campaign. We'll be creating some scenario campaigns so that people have different examples of what to do in certain scenarios. And just some guidance on how they can refer through that. Additionally, we want to, as we stated previously, make sure that we're promoting the organizations that are in our community doing the work. And any volunteer opportunities that are available for our residents that want to provide some assistance. And really making sure that we're staying on theme here to talk about the hand up, not hand out. Again, reiterating that there are so many providers in our community doing this work. It's really crucial that our community knows that they can help in that way and not continue to enable those that are on the streets and asking for money. We're looking at updated, updating our signs. Again, this is something to be updated once this final plan is adopted because that will dictate what needs to be updated per our ordinance updates. We're continuing to do community education. So we've got. A drafted resource guide that we're looking at printing, posting and handing out, distributing to the community. We are hoping to coordinate with our local businesses to provide consistent messaging and tools and let them know what's available to them as they're running into some scenarios that fall in line with this plan. And additionally, we have held two resource fairs at the sleep center and have been doing proactive outreach there to make sure that our unsheltered folks that access the sleep center know the changes that are coming. So we're making sure that we're continuing to engage with them and keep them posted on what's to come. If and when council decides to adopt this plan, here are some of the priorities that will be. If and when council decides to adopt this plan, here are some of the priorities that will begin to be uh, worked on by staff. So we will make sure that the uh, enforcement of the revised and new ordinances are beginning to be put in place. We will make sure that our city staff is equipped with the tools, training and standard operation procedures necessary to operate under this new model. Uh, we will make sure to finalize the sleep center closeout, closeout, which includes surplusing some of that property. Coordinating for sale or disposable or certain items um, and restoring the lease site to its original condition per our lease agreement. Additionally, we'll making sure that we are working on establishing um, an R F P per council's approval to look at subcontracting work with someone as stated in the one plus framework. Deliver ongoing public education of the changes to come. And lastly, if we decide, if council decides to move forward with the one plus framework to hire someone. We will make sure that we align um, information to be given back to council either on a quarterly basis. Or whatever council decides to give direction for it, to make sure that we're being transparent about the work that's happening in the community and everyone stays in the know. So with that quick run through, um, I am open to any questions you may have. Um, you know, as staff, we respectfully recommend that we get this plan adopted so that we can move on with finalizing this plan. And closing out the sleep center as anticipated.
Mr. Scog.
Thanks for all your work, Elizabeth. Um, I don't have a problem with with um, the sleep center as we know it closing. What I would like to do though is that that when that closes, that will create a situation that it'll create a situation. Um, where I have a, I have talked to a number of people about different thoughts and ideas on how to deal with that. Um, the part of this group, this uh, ordinance or plan is uh, surplusing equipment right now. I think I think there are a number of people who I've talked to who have some great ideas about what could be done on another facility. Um, I don't think that the city should run the facility. I don't think the city should be in the business of of managing. That particular uh, need in this, in in a, in a population. But I would not want to see um, some assets that we have right now. Um, gotten rid of without some more discussions about some possibilities of having other entities manage and run. Um, some sort of a facility that where people can, you know, get their feet on the ground. Again, I don't think that's the city's responsibility, but I think we could help facilitate it. I would not want to vote, I would not vote to get rid of surplusing equipment. Until we come up with maybe a little, you know, we have until the end of September to have that lot back in shape. Um, so although I think we can close it as it exists today. But before we get rid of things, I'd like to see some more discussions take place or at least explore other possibilities.
Thank you, Dave. Councilmember Myers.
So I've done a lot of thinking about what is our city look like post-closure? And addressing what most people, I I don't think we're arguing over criminalizing homelessness. But addressing the criminal behavior of some of the homeless population. Um, and the public outcry for keeping public spaces safe, accessible and healthy. So I researched a lot of different cities across uh, Washington and what they're doing within Washington law and what's allowed within the new uh, grants passed decision. Uh, and some cities are taking some pretty bold approaches. And some of the ideas I I thought of and and witnessed in some of the ordinances were the blocking of sidewalks, which we are addressing with the no s- uh, no sit, no sleep. No lie on sidewalks, uh, shopping carts on public property. Aggressive panhandling, public drug use and public urination. Um, the other thing that they talked about was a one, two, three approach for enforcement. So one, one touch being uh, education and a warning, giving them uh, hey, you can go here. We have these resources available. You can go to treatment. Uh, we've talked about that in the one plus. Uh, two being uh, fines, so minimal fines for uh, if you're not listening, we've warned you once. Again, you're on the sidewalk with a shopping cart or you're using drugs in the park. Um, there could be a fine associated with that. And then the third would be uh, criminal, um, ninety days in jail or a thousand dollar fine. Um, all these have been used in different cities, Olympia, Everett, Federal Way, Prosser, Yakima, Kennewick. So across the board within our state, um, there have been ordinances used to help with these things. Uh, so if council would entertain those types of ordinances, um, there's, we can dive into those types of things. Um, but I think that's what most, what I've seen most people complaining about, again, blocking sidewalks. Shopping carts on public property, aggressive panhandling, public drug use and public urination and defecation.
Don, do you know by chance with the the shopping cart ordinance? What do they define as a shopping cart or what, you know? I mean, if I'm pulling my wagon down the street with groceries in it, cause I'm walking home from the grocery store, is that illegal?
No, but that would be covered under the blocking the sidewalk if it's within, because we have ADA access, you have to have so much of public right away for ADA access. And there is a set width that needs to be open at all times. So that could be defined. Um, but no, public card is exactly what you're thinking, Winco, Walmart, Safeway. If those are found off of those businesses and being pushed down the sidewalk. They could be approached, said you need to take it back. That's your warning. Two, fine. Three, y- your stuff is confiscated. You're, now it's criminal offense. Okay?
Um, councilmember Martinez.
Do we already have some of those ordinances in place? I recall conversations about the shopping carts, excuse me. And um, you know, that's really the responsibility of the, excuse me, the owner. So if it was Safeway, they're responsible. Gosh darn it. But I thought that we had updated our our shopping cart, not to say that, you know, because it's Safeway or whatever grocery store or period. You know, that um, we don't care about it. We do care about it, but I thought we had updated it.
I don't believe we have. There's a state law on theft of shopping cart, but as we discussed, you have to have a quote-unquote a victim. So one of the stores would have to want to be a victim up to this point. Uh, the the two largest stores do not want to be victims. And so um, so it makes it impossible to enforce that.
So in in the ordinances that I saw, the cart is confiscated, stored on public property. So we just hold it at our operation center. And then they, those grocery stores could be notified, hey, your carts here, come get it. And if they don't get it, then it's destroyed.
Yeah, and we have done that piece. Um, we've done roundups and we've contacted the stores. I know stores Safeway, for example. Uh, put geographic uh, brakes on on their carts, which has helped out tremendously. So there are some things that have been in place um, surrounding that. But so we have done that in the past.
If we have an ordinance that makes shopping carts illegal on public property, AKA sidewalks. Then we can do something without needing a victim.
Catherine, did you have something to add?
I was just going to um, answer councilwoman Martinez's question about whether we had certain ordinances on the books. We do have and have had for quite a while an aggressive panhandling ordinance. We also have an ordinance that prohibits de- defecation or urination on public property.
Thank you, Catherine.
On the aggressive panhandling, what, I didn't see that one in our books. Uh, what does that entail? Cause I saw um, in other cities fifteen feet from ATMs, fifteen feet from grocery stores, gas stations, uh, public spaces, AKA the library.
Yeah, it's in our chapter nine dot twenty-two. And it is uh, prohibited in any public place, which means any road, alley, lane, parking area, sidewalk. Or any place private or otherwise adopted to and fitted for vehicular or pedestrian travel that is commonly used by the public.
Pretty broad, Don.
Yeah, including any public playgrounds, school grounds, recreation grounds, parks, parkways, park drive, park paths and right of ways open to the use of the public. And then there's also a separate section on solicitation from vehi- vehicular occupants.
Again, the enforcement's going to be the issue. Um, I know we've done traffic emphasis, but if we do public nuisance emphasis, where police are looking for these types of things and making a sweep, uh, maybe we can effectively play whack-a-mole for a little bit until people get.
Yeah, I think that is a question that I've heard a number of times on the council is the enforcement piece of that. Is that something that's been talked about amongst staff as to how that will look January or June thirtieth beyond?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, so as we uh, discussed previously, so the initial piece will be thirty days of emphasis. Um, in some way, shape or form, whatever that'll be, and that'll be after the outreach at the um, the sleep center. Uh, to discuss the potential new rules and or the rules are on the books. Um, and then from there, we'll kind of have to see where we're at and um, what that looks like. So whether it be sporadic or what have you, and I would anticipate that um, the thirty days of emphasis will also include like our downtown uh, foot beat. Patrols, et cetera, so.
Thank you. Mr. Scog.
Uh, does ordinance say that it, that even though the the owner, the safeways, the Wincos, they don't want the cart back? That it's still illegal to, even that it's not considered stolen property, but it it's still, we can still say that there can't be a cart, even if they don't complain?
I think you could adopt an ordinance. I don't think we currently have one that addresses the shopping cart issue specifically.
Is there any sort of loose statistics or anecdotal evidence from staff or streets or somebody that's saying that this problem is increasing or decreasing?
I can say it's grown the last eight years. It hasn't been like a large number of carts we've stored. It's been pretty small.
Mr. Lombardi.
Yeah, so um, late last year, I did do a survey of five of the bigger stores to see what the number was, what the cost was. And after the fifth one, it was well over a hundred thousand dollars in in loss. But the thing that surprised me more than anything was where where did they end up? And I went into the encampments with Joe. Uh, we saw a number of them there. Um, and they were being used for a number of of issues, but the big concern was when I spoke to the shopping um, retailers was it was ending up in the lake. And so now we're talking about environmental issue. And so I think an ordinance from that standpoint is warranted. How it looks, it's up to the council. But there is an environmental concern.
So it sounds like there's some, Mr. Panchar.
Yeah, I I mean, I, Don, thank you for doing some research, first of all. Um, I think we we should be learning from other people that are that are doing this. I don't think we have to necessarily. You know, we invent the wheel. We we have lots of people that are that are working through this. Um, I think we all, uh, at least, uh, at least I would like to continue to see is progress towards um, towards having a, you know, a cleaner, safer community. So if we can look into some of this, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. Yeah, it seems like there's some consensus up here to look at strengthening those ordinances surrounding the public nuisance of shopping carts on the streets. So I don't know how severely we want to punish the retailers, but I I know we've engaged in conversations with them in the past with mixed results. It sounds like Victor, right? So um, Mr. Myers.
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in support of that. Uh, um, again, the idea behind it is to keep the streets clean. Just yesterday, I saw three shopping carts being pushed throughout various parts of town significantly far from different grocery stores. Um, I saw a Winco cart, I seen a Walmart cart, and I mean, we're talking all the way on Broadway. Again, they're not wanting to get involved in trespassing because it's probably cumbersome and time-consuming. But if we confiscate it, then they have the option to come pick it up if they want. And if if they don't respond, then just destroy the property. Yeah, it keeps it out like, uh, the other one that I wanted to address was the public drug use. I know Washington state has relaxed its laws on uh, personal drug use. Do we have anything stating that they can't be used in public parks or public spaces? Obviously, public intoxication is a thing, but um, if we can get to step one before they're at that point.
Um, yeah, so that is uh, one of the park rules that you can be um, excluded from the parks for as well as the uh, being illegal. Now, I'm just trying to figure out how not to be going in and out. So um, yes, we did, we do have, that is one of the uh, rules in the part that you can be excluded for and ultimately trespass for. Um, as well as obviously the state law, um, making it legal. Obviously, the state law is fairly weak um, when it comes to that, but yes, it is. Uh, there are uh, ways of dealing with it, I guess.
Really only the piece we're missing is the shopping cart portion and what I see most cities doing for quote-unquote uh, homeless criminal activity.
Um, regarding the twenty-four seven facilitator piece of that, uh, was there any more thought put into how that would be funded or what budget surrounding something like that would be?
Yes, any sort of homeless activity, including street outreach, this is what this would fall under, can be uh, expensed through our document recording fees that we do get and receive as contracted through the county.
And as as of now, though, we don't have a particular entity that we're in discussion with as far as fill, filling the role of a facilitator, or we are?
Not specifically, but I'm more than happy to start scouting and begin conversations. Um, I just want to make sure that we adopt this plan before we get ahead of going on to the next step.
Mr. Scog.
I guess I'd still like to reiterate as far as if if we say we are adopting this plan. Then all the, everything that we have involved right now gets surplus.
That is correct unless council decides to remove that portion or put that on hold, that can also be directed as well. But for now, what's included in this plan is to proceed with closing out the sleep center and also surplusing and removing any of the property that's on site.
I personally would like to see us to hold, hold, at least have another um, period of time because we're kind of up against the September thirtieth deadline. Um, I I would like to uh, see if there are entities that would come forward that say we can use this equipment or this 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 stuff. And and do something else with it. Um, I I would, I would like to take that out of the getting, you know, part of um, of the two parts. One is um, getting rid of surplusing equipment. Well, you know what page it's on, tell me.
I got you, don't worry. Page seven of eight, where we talk about the rollout procedures of what would happen and what priorities would come of this adoption. And if you go down to the third bullet, um, you're looking at finalize the sleep center closeout by surplusing city-owned property. Coordinating the sale or disposal of surplus item and restoring the lease site to its original condition per our agreement terms.
Well, I know I've talked to a number of people that have some brilliant ideas. That's, that's not a city-run facility or a city-run. That's, that's not a city-run facility or a city-run but I think if we, if we dispose their closeout, dispose of surplusing city-owned property, I presume that would also include the shelters.
That is correct.
Before that becomes a fire sale, I think I've heard of a couple of proposals that make a lot of sense to me that are not city-run but would be able to avail themselves of that stuff. And I, I don't think that just by saying there's no more sleep center, everything goes away. I, I think we will still have to deal with you say whether we, whether we take care of it or just have to deal with the fallout. There will be issues that come up, and I think there are some proposals, again, that I've heard that are interesting that potentially could use that equipment and property. So before we get rid of it, at least I'd like to see if there could be another, you know, time period where we could discuss some other options, particularly with other entities who might want to step forward, whether that's, you know, Thrive could be involved with that. You know, and maybe, you know, bring some expertise to the, to the plan. I would not want to get rid of public property at this particular point. Councilmember Myers?
The councilmember Scog, in order to get to, I guess, sell those units, we still need a surplus. We can surplus and then sell them to whichever entity would want to purchase them. So we still need to surplus them. Be able to do that.
Well, I think the, the, the part of the problem that I see with that is somebody says, hey, you got to come up with $500,000 to buy them. That's going to put anybody locally out of that market. Although I think there are some other funds that are, you know, perhaps even the county, the funds that originally purchased those are, are still floating around out there. Maybe there's some options that, that we could find there, but I don't think to put them up for sale, they'll, they'll, they will not stand Moses-like. So I, I think by not surplusing them at this particular time, at least makes some sense to me and gives, at least gives some doors that are not slammed shut.
Councilmember Martinez?
I have to agree with David that that we kind of postpone surplusing them until we can get an idea of the, the value and how much or how many are actually usable. Because I've had similar conversations where there might be other entities that would like to utilize those. I don't know what for specifically, but since we do have the lease till September, it gives us a little bit of time to, to think this part through. All of this has been moving very quickly. And I think there are parts that we could just kind of slow down on, and this would be one of them because I mean, council is asking the, the community to help with this issue of homelessness. And I don't necessarily mean, you know, the drug addicted and the mental health people because those services don't exist here, right? But there are definitely people here that utilize that sleep center that are financially unable to have a home or an apartment or something. Those are the people that I'm trying to make sure don't fall through the cracks in having closed the sleep center. So if we could just know that we are going to surplus them, but do it in a way or in a manner that our community is able to maybe participate in possibly purchasing them.
Can we give a clarification real quick on what surplusing is?
So first of all, before you can transfer ownership for any personal or real property, you would need to adopt a resolution declaring them surplus. And then it's up to the city council to determine how you want those items disposed of, but generally it has to be in a commercially reasonable manner. So if you're looking at trying to essentially gift them to another entity, there are some restrictions on, on who you would be able to gift them to. Otherwise, most of those sales would be at fair market value.
Well, I, that's, that's the, I guess, if, if that would be a a nonprofit, could they be gifted to a nonprofit?
There would be some options that we could explore. So I think that one of the options there would be not to surplus them, but to lease them.
I just think if we, if we surplus them, particularly the shelters, that will, there will be nobody in this room that's going to say, I've got $500,000 burning a hole in my pocket and we're going to make that happen. I think by not surplusing them right now, it gives us at least, you know, till the first of September to, 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 you know, entertain, you know, local entities that, that could be, you know, come up with a plan. Somebody is going to have to deal with it. The, 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 the whole housing, sheltering, you know, I don't think that should be the city, but, but some, but it, just because we don't do it, doesn't mean it goes away.
Deanna?
Yeah, if I could get clarification, what shelters are we talking about surplusing? Because there are the sleep center shelters right now, which are the sheds that were literally just utility sheds from Lowe's or Home Depot or whatever. And then we have those other pellet shelters that are currently not being utilized. They're paid for, but not being utilized. So David, if you could clarify what shelters you're all of them, okay.
So for clarification, the shelters on site would be the ones that we're prioritizing right now with the closeout of the sleep center. But we do still need to discuss on what we plan to do with the pellet shelters as well.
So the pellet shelters are not part of this particular discussion?
Correct.
I would be willing to give a set amount of time to have somebody come claim them, but I'm, I mean, I don't. Based on the, what I'm seeing thus far, I don't hold out much hope that there's an entity that can get everything together in a reasonable amount of time to actually take them and use them in our community. I may be wrong, but I mean, that requires quite a bit of work. And what we've found thus far is, I mean, that was the shortcomings of utilizing state funding is that the, the solutions available through those funding mechanisms didn't match what we felt the community wanted to see. And so you do need a private entity to do this, but which one is it? There hasn't been one identified in our community yet that's willing to take this on or has the resources to do it. So again, I will, I would be glad to give somebody that opportunity, but how long? 60 days seems like plenty of time.
All right. I'm going for that. Mr. Panter.
If, if we needed the 60 days, I'm going to look over at Ryan. Is that if they're still sitting there 60 days from now and nobody takes them?
I could get them to the shop in 60 days after that, after I store them.
No, 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 I get, I get that. I'm talking about, we have an obligation to get the site back by September, was it September 30th?
We can do that by September.
If we give, we don't touch them for 60 days?
No, what he's saying is we'd relocate them to the city shop and just stack them.
Store them, they, store them.
Okay.
Yep.
Are we satisfied with that, Mr. Scog?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All right, thank you, Liz.
I do want to clarify. So there is interest in proceeding with adopting this plan, but we want to take some time to evaluate if there's any interest in the community for the units themselves to run some sort of facility. Is that what I'm hearing correctly? I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
I would, I would take a stab at move to accept the plan as presented with the exception of giving 60 days to work through the surplusing of the property.
May I ask that you add also the strengthening of other ordinances for Don Myers additions to the conversation?
Don, you want to help me?
The one I really want addressed, I think we got most of it. And we're planning an enforcement sweep on these ordinances, but the shopping cart thing I think is what we're missing.
So to add the shopping cart piece of, of trying to strengthen the ordinance on not having them on public property.
Yeah, we have a motion. Is that understandable, Liz?
Understood.
Hold on, Mr. Scott.
I, I, does, does the shower facility, the office, the rental places are, are, is, is, we don't own, we own those, we don't own those?
We do not own those, and I did verify, and they are not interested in selling those units to us at this time. They are looking at picking those up and sending us a bill to restore those.
We have a, a motion on the floor.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Liz.
Next item of business is item number 4.2, which is the camping regulations amendment ordinance, and this is a draft at this point presented by our police chief, Mr. Sands.
Going to move it away so I don't blow it up when I'm going to talk. All right, so there's, this ordinance, as you may know, we have a camping ordinance already on public property. This one, and I, when I start saying "um" a lot, I'm sure that Catherine will jump in and make me look less stupid. Because right on now, I'm thinking back on when my mom told me to be a Parks and Rec director, but the so what we're adding on this is the, the private property piece that will give us a little teeth to move into that realm and to make those folks accountable. And really what we're, we're really looking for is to elicit some cooperation from those folks that they'll be mindful of their own property as well. And so we don't end up with large camps on private property like we have in the past. And so that is specifically that ordinance, and I don't know if Catherine has anything to add to that.
I don't really have anything to add, other than I'm happy to answer any questions that council has. We, we did have discussions previously about the education piece and working with the private property owners before we entered the property and, and conducted any activities. So I think those are all covered in the draft ordinance.
Questions or comments? Councilmember Martinez?
I have a question or whoever might be able to answer this. So this is an update mostly on the private camping. What if, say, the private property owner doesn't mind them being there? Because that has happened before and we end up with these big homeless encampments, so is there, is there a way to ensure that they're following this ordinance? I mean, because the private property owner has their own rights. Does that, does that make sense what I'm asking? Are they going to be penalized if for some reason they decide it's okay for for somebody to utilize their space?
So to try and answer that question, we have some parameters in the ordinance about allowing it with permission camping on private property. And so it has to address sanitation, it has to address refuse. There are limitations on how long consecutively folks can camp. And then remember too, that we've got our zoning ordinances that overlay all of this. So if you're allowing activity that's not permitted in that particular zone, it would be subject to enforcement under the zoning code.
Do you have more questions? So the camping and, and something that keeps coming up is, you know, the pooping and peeing, let's just call it what it is, pooping and peeing out in the public. I know way back when we were starting to talk about what are we going to do when everybody's camping? Because we don't have a sleep center. And I recall that we added porta potties so that we could hopefully limit the, you know, what they were, what some people were doing out in public spaces or private spaces. So my question is, are, would we consider something like that? Or are all of our public restrooms open? Because I've heard that at times they're, they're closed, and so where, where is anybody going to go? And I'm, and that's coming from moms who have a kid that want to, that needs to use the restroom and they find the public restroom is closed. So is that something that is going to be looked at as we have more people potentially in the parks during the time that they're allowed to be in the park?
So that's kind of a twofold answer. Most of our restrooms in our parks are not winter worthy, so they have to be shut down in the wintertime and in the, in the off season. We do have, we have put porta potties out in the parks during the wintertime. We do have issues with them being burned to the ground. We, the, the homeless population, some of them will go in there and start fires to keep warm and burn them down. Some of them will vandalize them. Not all of them. This is, again, it's criminal activity. It's not something that all of them are participating in. But it, but it is also a cost issue. When we have bathrooms open year round, they tend to get vandalized. So it is an increased cost to the city to do that. That's something that we'd have to factor in in a plan going forward. So the bathrooms themselves, there are some that we could potentially keep open, but then there would have to be some sort of oversight of those bathrooms for protection from vandalism, protection from damage. Because if we break them, then we have to spend money to repair them and they're not available while they're being repaired. So it, it's, it's not as simple as putting up a couple of porta potties in, in spaces and having them available.
Sure. So does security already go around? Because we have security at nighttime, right?
Security, security will lock up the park bathrooms at the end of the night. A model I've seen looked at is similar to the locks we have here where they lock at night and they open in the morning. They're on a time lock. Again, those all cost, I, I heard a, a number from somebody about it's $1,000 for each one of those locks. There, there's costs associated with all of it. It can all of it be done, yes, but I don't know that any of it is going to prevent all of the vandalism. Nothing ever does. So there's some issues there we would have to explore in looking at this. It's, it's not, it's a complex issue. I, I know, you know, pooping and peeing doesn't sound complex, but out there in public, it's complex. So.
Right. And I guess one of the reasons that I'm asking the questions is because that is a big issue for some people, for anybody really. So just for people to understand that that problem might get worse before it gets better, especially if we're having to close our bathrooms or we decide not to do porta potties. So yeah, that, that's a concern for me.
But there's also the aspect of, and not to pile on, but drug use occurs within those facilities as well. So if we have the bathrooms open, we will have drug use if we've got in there. If we've got kids using the park at the same time, they're going into a bathroom where somebody might be passed out from drug use or in the act of using drugs in that bathroom. So we have had reports of that, and that's one of the reasons we also started closing those bathrooms, you know, earlier and having the security go through there. That has not been as much of a problem, but two years ago when I first got here was a significant issue. So.
All right, one more question on the camping. When you think of camping, I think of a tent, you know, and I know that's not allowable. But how about the sunshades, you know? Because, I mean, our parks have plenty of trees, but there are times where there is no shade available because everybody, you know, grabbed their spot under the tree. So are those little pop-up canopies, I guess they're called, allowable?
Yeah, so without, I, I know I will dreadfully misquote it, but essentially in the camping ordinance, under the definition, it talks not only about basically camping, camping implements, but also that it appears the intent is to camp as opposed to what you're talking about.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion?
Okay, any other discussion? If not, I would accept a motion. Oh, excuse me, sorry. It's only discussion this evening. Okay, that was easy. Yes, sir.
Um, so I believe the intent is to come back on July eighth for adoption. Okay.
Sorry about that.
Yep. And then also, uh, do you want to discuss the sit, sleep, lie ordinance as well? Uh, because that's also in your packet.
Sit, sleep, lie on the sidewalks, is that right?
Yeah. That's, that's the first item right after the agenda though. Catherine or Chief, do you want to speak to that?
So this ordinance, um, is brought back, uh, based on council's discretion and interest in addressing the issue on the sidewalks. Um, and the, the, the earlier discussion was primarily, I think, precipitated by the activity in the downtown business corridor. Um, and several complaints from business owners and patrons, uh, who are having to step around folks who are in the sidewalks, in the doorways, et cetera. Um, so this is a pretty standard, uh, across the state of Washington, sit, sleep, lie ordinance right now. And it's, you can see that we've left the zones where it would be enforced blank because that would be something for council to address in its discussion about the scope of the applicability of this ordinance. Um, it's, it's going to be one of those that I would encourage you to limit to a particular area where it's most problematic because enforcing it citywide is, is going to be pretty tough.
Is that usually like the downtown? I mean, how do we define those areas?
You can do it by physical, um, location in terms of, you know, between these streets, uh, you know, or you can do it by zone, uh, all downtown. I don't know if we have a downtown commercial zone.
C one.
Yeah.
I mean, pretty much encompasses downtown, the C one zone, right?
Maybe on C one A.
And C one A, I mean, that, that, those two areas pretty much encompass the downtown as well as the area that you don't need off-street parking, correct?
Correct.
So that's the street parking with the sidewalks and.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. This, hold on, Don's got something.
I was just going to ask if Stratford Road and Pioneers included.
That's C two.
C, C two. Which is a much larger area. But I know Stratford is a, is a pretty big problem. Same with along Pioneer Safeway all the way up to Dairy Queen and beyond, but.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with Don's point that that's a problematic area. But also limiting, I mean, starting with C one, C one A is, that's not a super large area to begin with. And then we can, as Victor was suggesting, we just have a map or, I mean, we draw it out. So it may not cover exactly our zoning, um, boundaries.
If we just include those two streets, Stratford, Erd, and Pioneer.
Yeah.
Along with the, those two zones, so you want a C one A?
Councilmember Lombardi?
Yeah, so last year I visited, I think, six cities that had that already in place. And I presented that to, uh, Police Chief Sands, I think it was March of last year. Um, when I did visit with them and talk to a few of the council members, it was drawn out. Um, but, yeah, and they'll have, let's say, one or two zones in the city. It's usually where the shopping is, okay? Um, the biggest, uh, contributing, uh, variable to consider is to actually speak to the retailers. Uh, they're, they're the ones that will tell you what to do. So that's how the other cities were doing it.
Okay, Councilmember Martinez?
Just to, again, reiterate that we need to consider what downtown is as more businesses are coming in, like the Chamber of Commerce, they're building, they have a couple of new, um, businesses in there. So is that considered downtown even though it faces Broadway?
Hundred percent, yeah.
Okay, so it's not just Third Avenue? Okay.
Yep.
And how about on the other side of Third Avenue?
Mm-hmm.
Same?
I think all the way to Fourth is C one.
Yeah.
And then C two thereafter.
Can I keep? I guess my, my concern would be if, I understand what we're, what we're trying to do, but if my con, my concern is if there, if a business owner is just past that, can they, can they be just past that zone and not be included in, uh, in the sitting, sleeping, lying? How do they come and say, hey, you forgot me?
I think Victor's suggestion that we reach out to the retailers is probably a worthwhile endeavor as we explore the options with this boundary. Mr. Fancher?
I think it's going to be a work in progress. I think a map is definitely the way to do it. I think you're going to have, uh, eventually, probably, um, it's either going to work real well, or it's not going to work well. And then we're going to get feedback, I'm sure. Um, I think the other thing is the same thing, it's just going to have to be an area, it's probably going to be bigger than what we want. Is my gut feeling, meaning as far as manageable, and then we're going to probably have to have some emphasis, you know, when, when we figure that out to, to coordinate and to talk, because, um, I, I just, our, our city is pretty unique, again, because of our lake, which is a nice thing to have. We're not congested into one area, so.
Councilmember Lombardi?
So the key component to this, when I spoke to the other cities, is law enforcement. Because they're the ones that have to enforce it. I don't think code enforcement can do it. Um, so really, you could have the best laid plans, but if it's not being enforced consistently, it's going to fail, so.
Has there been any discussion about, like, bike patrol? Or foot patrol?
Yeah, just, uh, as we have, uh, been doing over the last month or so, but, um, I've, I have so many resources to the road, so I, I, we will enforce it, but you've just thrown out not less than five different codes, right? And so, um, un, understand that we, we will absolutely enforce, we have no problems doing that. But, um, again, it will be prioritized, uh, to the, to the district or the zone that we're talking about. I urge that you make it as easy as possible and you square it off as much as possible, so there's no doubt. Um, because if there's doubt, then the fringes won't, won't get done. Um, and it will make it, uh, easier for us to actually enforce and to concentrate. So just my two cents.
Okay, Councilmember Martinez?
Uh, I, uh, would support what Chief Sands says, that, yes, there are code, there are ordinance that will need to be enforced. But I sure hope that, um, if there's somebody breaking in or there's an assault, that you're going to that call and not at a call where somebody is sitting on, on the sidewalk. And I'm, 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 that's what you're telling me, which, and which is what I like to hear.
Yeah, they, they'll be prioritized. And again, these are not, at face value and at the base, they are not criminal. And so, um, keep that in mind, that anything that we have will be a, um, a monetary fine to homeless people, more than likely. Um, the other piece is, that doesn't mean they can't move to criminal, depending on, for example, um, as we discussed with the park regulation, if they don't move, um, or they don't leave when they've been excluded, then they can be trespassed. And if they don't leave and they're trespassed, then they've committed a crime. Um, and so, again, with the, this sit, lie, uh, sleep, uh, initially, it is not a crime until such time as they obstruct us, um, or something else. So, um, those are things to keep in mind as well as we move forward and as we have, uh, as we set our expectations.
Not that this is directly related to the ordinance necessarily, but has there been any outreach to businesses as far as posting no loitering signs?
That is definitely part of the rollout process that we're working on. Consistent messaging, making sure our business owners know what their rights are and what they can do. All will correlate with being able to enforce and really making sure that the community is on the same page of how we can tackle on this issue together.
And we are telling property owners, if they can post the property, that makes it very easy on us. So, um, helps us help them, I guess, in a sense.
Great. Okay, any other comments, questions, concerns about the seat, sleep, sit, lie ordinance? We've got some good suggestions up here this evening, so. Mr. Carl Lindsay?
Yes, we'll come back on July eighth with a proposed map.
Perfect. Okay. Next business item is number five, which is regulations for Narcan on city property, ordinance three zero seven two.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, so before you, uh, which you've seen before, is the draft ordinance prohibiting the distribution and dispensing of Narcan on city property, subject to several exceptions that are outlined in the ordinance, as well as definitions of distribution, dispensing, and administration.
Mr. Scog?
Um, I would like to congratulate whoever was all involved in the, in the process of relocating or removing the machines from the library. I don't think there's any discussion as far as the value of Narcan. Um, a, and that's, that's not up for discussion. We know that that's a life-saving issue. Um, but I think, um, it was important that, uh, all voices were heard and that a decision was made to have that relocated. I think as there's some good faith shown in, in all parties involved in that, that it was removed. And, um, this ordinance gets a little muddy, um, in my mind. Um, and anytime it shall be unlawful, any person to a person, it, it, it just, I don't think, I think it's moot. I don't think we need the ordinance. Um, I think it, it can be something that can be readily available should the need arise. Um, but I would move, I would like to see the, the just shelf right now.
Councilmember Myers?
Uh, slightly disappointed to hear that, um, the Narcan machine was preemptively pulled from the library. Uh, when we talk about the library, we're talking about a place for kids to be. And I think what we use Narcan for is to protect those, that population. So I did a little bit of research again. Um, over seven hundred teens in the U.S. died from overdoses, and most of them was from fentanyl, a drug that only takes two milligrams, which is a very fine amount that can kill. And what's happening is it's turning up in fake pills, uh, disguised as Adderall, uh, Xanax, or Percocet. Um, many of these teens aren't drug users, they're going to be experimenting. A friend maybe have gave them a pill to try, uh, and there have been some tragic stories that I've found. Um, kids, students, athletes, neighbors, friends. Uh, Alexander Neville, fourteen, from California, took a pill he thought was OxyContin. It ended up to be fentanyl and he never woke up. Luca, being thirteen, died in his bedroom in the middle of the night after taking what he believed was a prescription pill. His mom found him the next morning. A little closer to home in Portland, uh, last year, five children died from fentanyl overdoses in city parks and homes, including toddlers who were accidentally exposed to powder or residue. So we talk about a large gathering of what we see, uh, drug users at Civic Park um, that end up using the library for a bathroom or, um, to charge their phones, because some of them do have phones, uh, or just a place, uh, warming or cooling center. And what I fear is that children will be accidentally exposed to fentanyl in that facility. Um, in having that machine, there could be a quick response to that particular thing. Uh, Narcan is, uh, safe. Again, it's been brought up before that, uh, even if they're not experiencing an overdose, nothing's going to happen to them. It doesn't cause them to be addicted to opioids just because you gave them Narcan. Uh, and it does work within minutes, um, which could save a life before our, um, medical team can get to them. So if one child overdoses in a library bathroom and we didn't have Narcan available, could we live with that? Could we look at the parents in the eye? And I, I don't think, I think we would immediately put it back in that, uh, in that facility as soon as that happened. And I'd rather it be there and not need it than we need it and don't have it.
Councilmember Martinez?
It's been difficult, this debate about where that Narcan machine should be. Um, as a nurse, it, I recognize and totally support Narcan being available anywhere and everywhere. Um, it's not just a drug user, uh, a homeless person that you think of. These are people that have jobs. They dress in a suit every day to their job, but they have an issue that they're working on, hopefully, that might need it, might need the Narcan. Um, and the library clearly was a good place for it to be, based on the numbers um, and how, you know, how it was utilized, often not utilized for people that were in the library, but utilized throughout our community. And that's what we want, right, is a safe community. Um, it has gone from the library, I, you know, that was up to thriving together to do that. Um, I would hope that we don't ban Narcan machines from city property um, and find a good, another good place for the Narcan machine because it's something that's going to be needed in this. This is not saying that I'm okay with drug use. I'm saying that I'm okay with giving people an opportunity to survive an overdose so that they can go on another day and hopefully make a good decision. I'm still going to see them in the ER or admitted overnight, or a couple of days, actually, if they're detoxing. Um, so let's, let's help each other out by allowing Narcan where it's needed. And that might just be city, city property. So I think that we should just table this ordinance. I do have one more thing, sorry. Um, I do need clarification because this has been brought up to me a couple of times. And I did bring it up, uh, during a previous council meeting, um, but I don't think anybody actually answered me. So during, uh, the council meeting, March twenty fifth, um, action was taken. Councilmember Lombardi moved to have staff develop a policy to prohibit the distribution of narcotics on city property, seconded by Councilmember Fancher. So I, I guess I'm confused and continue to be confused why we're talking about a Narcan ban when this action, this motion is about narcotics.
And my answer to that, uh, is I believe that we clarified from staff perspective after hearing from some of the motion makers, that they wanted to limit the restriction to just Narcan.
And, and we got that clarification, I believe, at the last council meeting?
Okay, so nothing official needs to be done. If I said apples, but I really meant bananas, and you guys knew it was bananas, then I don't need to change.
That's why we brought it back at the last meeting for public acknowledgement that that was the direction.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Scog?
Um, to Ms. Ackerman's comments about the hospital and, and Narcan, um, I'm absolutely baffled by that, that, that the hospital would say that there couldn't be a machine there if, um, and, and given away free, um, unless there's only a financial motive for not doing that, um, which I would find very disingenuous. Um, i- and, and it seems like a lot of the people were talking about having access to Narcan to are, are parents and, and students and, and not necessarily, um, a, a drug addict per se. So I don't see why, um, places like a hospital wouldn't be a very reasonable place to put a Narcan machine and have it be accessible free. Um, so to tell me that they can't do that, I don't get that at all. And to, to say that it was only some, we'd only give it to people who we could build to is, is abhorrent. Um, and it just goes flies in the whole face of the virtuous people trying to help somebody else. Um, so, um, I, I, I don't have a problem not being in the library. I think it still needs to be accessible, but I think there are other places that are equally accessible. but I think there are other places that are equally accessible. And so I think, I think the, I would prefer just to, you know, not pass this ordinance and table it and see what happens. I don't know that it's, it kind of makes it tough. I would hate somebody to think, oh, I'm, I've got Narcan in my pocket and I'm on this, on this, you know, it's in my purse, or and am I breaking the law? And I'd hate for somebody to feel like they were breaking the law by having it with them. It obviously has a value. I just don't know that the library was the place for it. And I think there are other alternatives that we could find.
Councilmember Lombardi.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I think it's important that we look at the original genesis of this. The city asked the library last year to remove it pleasantly. Madam Counsel spoke to them. It was working what we thought was an agency that was a partner in the city of Moses Lake. It was an ask in a pure spirit of cooperation and respect. And instead, it was this endless campaign of shame, abusive use of legal threats, and above all, a massive upheaval, a public records request on council members to try to find an open public meetings act. That doesn't really sound like a good working relationship with an agency in the city. And frankly, here we are now, a number of months later. And really, what was the only accomplishment by this? Massive division among citizens who had to go on their free time and get signatures and speak to council members. That was a disgrace. Now, now, all of a sudden, the library wants, apparently has removed it. And so when the original motion was made to remove it within 72 hours, it was changed to create a policy. And as Paul said, the first speaker, we do have a responsibility to our citizens, and it was, that was their request to remove the machine. And this nonstop narrative that the city council and the city was against Narcan machines, that was never the case. What it was, was the placement of it. We never asked for a Narcan machines to be removed from the city in total. It was to be moved to another location, in which we also gave suggestions. So from my standpoint, Mayor, the original genesis was to have the machine moved at the request of citizens. A policy at this point wouldn't have even been talked about if they had done that. And so I'm okay with moving forward and tabling it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Martinez.
To go back to Councilmember Scog's comments, the gal who was speaking, Pamela, from the hospital, she wanted to be clear. She's now left the group, the meeting, but she wanted to be clear that she was not speaking on behalf of the hospital. She was just speaking from what she understood is happening where she works. So I didn't want the hospital to be, you know, in the headlines tomorrow. I will, I will say that why we've gotten here, I think, as I recall, when that Narcan machine was put in the library, there was a particular council member that was very vocal in the public media. And so it did look very aggressive, council member, to the library about the Narcan. And unfortunately, not all of us shared that same kind of feeling about it at the time, but it certainly did put us at odds with the community. Yes, the community did speak out that they didn't want it there, but there was also another part of the community that spoke out and said, it should be there. It's the best place for it. So, yes, the contentiousness, the disrespect, it did come from council member, from a council member. And you can look up at the Columbia Basin Herald, One Source News, all of that. And so I apologize that we've gotten down to this point. But I'm glad that we're willing to table it now that we understand what is best needed.
Councilmember Fancher.
So, and I'm still, I still personally believe that it shouldn't be in the library. I do believe it needs to be in essentially located location. I'm definitely okay with tabling the policy here. One question I had is Teresa still here? Just, you may get asked to answer the question up here, I don't know, but does the health district distribute?
That one, but we don't have the right place for it. But we do have, and working with our board, purchasing something that we can have out front and then bring in for the night, just because we don't have the electricity out there. We do distribute it. We have frequently been at the Sleep Center. We have our harm reduction events here and in other communities. Most of the time, it's really interesting. That's what people are asking us to bring. It is expensive. The loss of that vending machine, that cost is now going to come to us in the community. It's going to come out of budgets like mine and renew. Thriving Together was offering it and paying for it, and it is quite expensive. We have it in our budget, and we're really committed to it. And I, I do want us to be one of the local public distribution sites. I just got to figure out, it can't be a vending machine just because of the climate and all that. So thanks for asking.
Appreciate, appreciate. Thank you.
Councilmember Lombardi.
Just wanted to address something that Councilmember Myers brought up. So the policy was originally for the distribution, not the administration. So if the library wants to keep a dozen or so behind the counter in case there's an issue, they can certainly make it available. That was never the issue. It was the distribution. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I have a few comments. You know, I also heard from a lot of members of the community who were opposed to the vending machine in the library. And I think where I agree with them is the idea that public institutions are for everyone, right? And quite honestly, people who use drugs frequently are not the majority of people in this community, thankfully. And, you know, I believe that there was a recognition of the importance of having institutions within a community that aspire to higher ideals. You know, a library is a place of learning and a family place. And, you know, I believe that as a society, and again, this was in a lot of conversations I had with people, there was also an acknowledgement that substance abuse disorder, addiction, alcoholism, whatever you want to call it, is a problem. And it doesn't, it doesn't mean that somebody's bad because they have that issue. And, you know, I've heard that a lot of people desire to help people who have those issues in our community. There are a multitude of varying opinions on how that help should best be administered and what that looks like. And I think that's been the toughest part up here is understanding where we fit into all of that. Again, for this community, based on the conversations that I'm having, it looked like a lot of the state funding put some restrictions on a lot of the services we're providing that just didn't match what we really wanted here. I acknowledge the efforts of groups like Serve Moses Lake or the Alano Club here in town that do work with people on a regular basis, from a very grassroots level with local support and all of those things. But again, back to the issue itself of having these institutions available for everybody and to have a community that aspires to, you know, clean and good living and family values and all of those things is important here. And so, you know, co-mingling some of these ideas together, while in its own right may have some aspirational components to it, again, just sort of perverted the idea of some of these institutions. And that's really where I felt the conversation lies. And so for me, it was very easy just to say that the path of least controversy is to treat the library as a library facility first and foremost. There are other public needs that we have in this community. Should we mix all of those together? Probably not. Because then what are we really doing as a society? There are those people who are afflicted with drug addiction, but I hope one day they'll be able to rejoin society and do the things that most people are able to do, like conduct themselves properly in public places. So for that reason, I am not very much in favor of distributing Narcan on public property and having this public body endorse that sort of thing when it's really more in Teresa's wheelhouse as far as public health. That's what we're really talking about here. So I hear from the council right now that, you know, tabling the ordinance is desired, but I would propose that maybe a compromise would be that we allow Narcan on public property within the city by permission of the council or the city manager, so that at least the discussion can be had and that people can come to a meeting like this and give their opinion on whether that's a suitable place or not. Because again, I don't think anybody's saying that Narcan doesn't save lives, right? But to have this ideal to where every single person is going to need it in their medicine cabinet to feel safe, I think is the wrong direction to go also. We should really be looking as a community at getting past being reliant on Narcan. So that's where I am with it. So I would be in favor of some sort of compromise, again, permitting distribution by permission of council. Victor Lombardi.
Yeah, so just following Robert Tools of Order, we probably should make a motion on this existing one and then come out with a new motion that works. So I would make a motion that we table the existing regulations for Narcan on city property ordinance 3072. And then that is seconded and voted in favor. We can then create a new motion if you'd like. So I'm making that motion.
Okay, I think Deanna had something to say, unless you're good with that.
Just one point that Thriving Together did talk to city staff. So I guess, and I understand what you're saying. Some of us were new and we didn't know about it. And so the Narcan machine did get placed in the public library. However, city staff had already been talking and agreed that that's where it would go. So your point is well taken, but that already happened in this particular instance, so.
Well, it wasn't brought before the council, however. So if it was by council permission was my first suggestion.
Okay.
I was merely offering options to the seven of us to consider. Mr. Scog.
The one thing that I've heard twice tonight that kind of one was the hospital, and I realize that you're not talking for the hospital, but the, but the financial aspect of it. And then actually, Teresa, you brought that up about they were doing that for free. If we're going to put a dollar sign on providing Narcan, then the altruistic, it's for the children, it's for everybody, that, that conversation goes away. So my challenge to you would be that if Narcan is what we want, then it is not even, the dollar is not even a part of the discussion.
Okay, we have a motion on the table, I believe. Is that right?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, I believe, to table the ordinance implementation of Narcan. Ben, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Oops, I was aye as table it, sorry.
Okay.
You're just too fast for me.
That was six in favor of tabling, and I was the one opposed, so. Mr. Lombardi, would you like to make another motion?
Seem to have the idea on what, so you can certainly make one if no one else wants to address that.
Sure, I would. I, at this point, sorry, no, I think we're right. I'm about to make a motion, so. I would move that we, that Narcan distribution or handing out of Narcan on city property be allowed by council permission only. Well, to Deanna's point, I believe the, what got us down this road in the first place was the city manager at the time without council's input making that decision. So, yes, I think I would say that the council, that would be my motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Mr. Scog.
I don't, I think a situation arose. I think there was a public response to that situation. And, and then it was dealt with. I don't know that, you know, if somebody had an event and we want to talk to the city council and, and they have to approve it. I think the way this situation arose and was dealt with was self-resolving. And I think if this ordinance obviously could be already written, and if something came up that, you know, created a situation that there was a public outcry to, some of each, some but, but deal with it then and say, okay, you know, this, this has reared its head again, and this is how we're going to deal with it. So I would not be in.
Well, I'm not suggesting that every request be met with a no.
Okay. Councilmember Martinez.
You know, we've gotten down this road on a couple of things where things just move way too fast, and we don't allow for public input until decisions have been made, and then we get to hear from everybody and when it's too late. So my preference would be that we hold off on a motion regarding whether or not to allow it by council. But let's talk to the experts or the people that work in this line of work with the service providers and ask them for some input as to, you know, what, what would that look like? If we were to partner with you in creating this ordinance? Because that's what we've been talking about all this time is partnering with the community, including the community. And I think this is one of these times where we should put a pause on it so we can talk to the people who have Narcan, who know about Narcan and the different service providers, so that we can make a good ordinance instead of us doing it up here, not knowing a lot.
I understand that, I do. And speaking to the partnering, I mean, a partnership is two, it's a two-way street. So, yeah, I was thinking about that exact thing as we've been discussing this, is that I believe we're trying to develop, you know, a pretty thorough list of providers of various services in the community and trying, I believe, the one plus concept is to coordinate some of that, right? So you know, I think this is completely appropriate, that you're establishing, again, a two-way relationship where, yes, you want to do this, and the way you're doing it, we're good with that. And that relationship is established.
Can we do that later on, though, and not have a motion now?
Well, we've made, I've made the motion and there's a second, so we do have to vote on it.
Who seconded?
Victor did.
Of course, yeah.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Oh, sorry, hold on. Don, did you have something to add?
I think it's just, it's excessive. I don't think it's going to change anything we already have because the city attorney brought up that leases or subleases on city property have to be approved by council anyways. So I think this is where we're kind of double dipping or having two of the same exact thing. I'm okay with giving approval for Narcan on city property. for Narcan on city property if we need each one brought up to the city council. I think that's the way it should be brought anyways. I don't know if Catherine, if you want to shed any light on that if we're just wasting time.
My question was for Catherine was just basically where are we in a situation where this would even? There's a use agreement with every public facility, right, in some capacity, other than if they're just out playing in the park, I mean, for distribu- for
So our existing leases for city-owned property haven't, I mean, the distribution and dispensing of Narcan wasn't really on anybody's mind as they were drafting the leases. So there's nothing specific in any of those leases that would identify that particular use as being prohibited under the terms of the lease. That would be something that we could certainly include in future leases so that that would be brought to council for any exceptions as far as allowing those to occur. But, you know, it's broader than just existing leases because the proposed ordinance incorporated anybody, you know, handing out in public on city property being their own vending machine in essence. That's how broad that was. So I just wanted to clarify, it's not just related to leases.
Right, so if we did nothing, I mean, somebody could just sit outside the front of the library and hand out Narcan all day.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi? So I, your motion has value in the sense that we would be derelict in our duty in that the original, how this whole thing started was two, possibly three staff members made a policy decision violating an RCW and not asking city council if this was the policy that was wanted. So we have nothing in here that says, how do we prevent that from happening, except your motion? And how often would this come up? It may never come up to, there's only so many properties that have entities that I guess would be interested in doing something like this. But this at least as an obligation and a responsibility of city council members to the citizens to make sure that the same mistake doesn't happen twice, your motion takes care of it. And so that's why I do second it, and I would call the question.
So for clarification, then, for purposes of the motion, if you were to look at the draft ordinance that's in your packet and leave everything with the exception of, you know, in section three, under the prohibition, the prohibition would only be accept as authorized by the city council? The definitions and everything else would remain the same? Is that what the intent of the motion is?
Yes.
I was, would you come up here, please, Teresa?
Yep.
I hear you in the heart of what you're saying, but you also said, let Teresa go do her work. And so
Somebody did. Did I say that?
You did. No, I'm holding you to, no, I'm kidding you.
Yeah, no, that's fair. I agree with that.
But we have also Good Samaritan laws that says that I can distribute Narcan as a citizen too. And so you would be telling citizens that they cannot give somebody if they're in the park and there's an overdose. So I just, I think you need some time to really talk through it. To Mr. Lombardi's point about, you know, opening Pandora's box of, you know, now somebody's gonna be sitting out in front of there. I'm back here trying to wrap my brain around, how do I work with you? Because we do partner with the farmers market.
I was thinking about this too, and, you know, an entity that has as much standing, taxpayer-funded, the health district is, I would be totally in favor of, okay, we, during your yearly thing, we come and talk, here's the services we're going to be providing for the year and say, all right, good.
So there are just a couple of things that'd be, I'd be here all the time. You know, and maybe that is what you are implying is that that's what you would like. That would be, you know, just something or how do we? And I sound counsel versus staff on it. It's just, it is just by saying, you could even say a certain number, but you are limiting your citizens from distributing to another citizen too. It's not just our organization.
I I just just want to hop in here because we've got the exceptions in the ordinance and and let me just read them quickly. So the the exceptions are first responders, which includes police, firefighters, paramedics, public health agencies, and trained medical professionals acting within their official duties. City-approved medical personnel or authorized individuals administering Narcan pursuant to RCW sixty nine forty one oh nine five. Exceptions specifically approved by the city manager, which would now be city council. And the last is the administration or distribution of Narcan by an individual to another person for remedial purposes. So that covers the Good Samaritan aspect. So as I understand it, the change would be to change city manager authorization to city council authorization.
Okay.
Doesn't really change it that much.
Sounds like we may want to consider this for a while. I'm still going to call the vote, though, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion does not pass. So is there any desire to look at this?
Yeah.
And bring it back?
I would like to. I still think there's a there's a half a meter in there.
Okay.
I mean, and and I think we just need to, I mean, we did get some of the answers, then Teresa brought good questions and and I but I I completely agree with Councilman Swartz and Lombardi regarding the Pandora's Box and making sure that we didn't just get the wool pulled over eyes. I mean.
Yeah, and I do want to clarify, the way I envision this working is that we do very much work in cooperation with these partners. But again, it's it has to be a lot of community buy-in before we just allow anybody to do it. So, Ms. Martinez?
Thank you for putting a pause on that. I I do agree that we need to talk about it a little more. I do want to I do want to acknowledge, though, that what previously happened with the previous city manager, and that was Kevin Fur, as everybody probably knows, and I'll just say his name. It was all in good faith. He didn't decide to put the, to allow or even have a discussion about the Narcan machine in the library because he knew it would tick off the whole community and we'd be at odds. That's very opposite of Kevin Fur. He was looking for a way to facilitate what he thought was something that is needed in this community. And so I just want to remind everybody that this was not based on ill will on his part that this happened.
Okay, next up, we have item number six, which is the Sand Dunes Wastewater Treatment Facility Blower Motor Final Repair Contract.
Well, that's a mouthful. This is
What are we blowing out there, Brian?
No. If you guys recall, way back in January, we had a pretty big power surge that basically took out a lot of the equipment. So we executed, we went through Madeline when she was interim city manager, we executed emergency contract, we got a contractor out here, we made the repairs. Moving forward, we run the council in May, or not council, Finance Committee, we discussed it. Now we'd like to get approval to move forward with actually replacing that equipment that's failed. So there's VFDs, there's controllers, there's interfaces, there's radios, pretty high-dollar stuff. Why we're asking now is the lead time on some of this stuff is four to six months. So coming now to ask for it, to try to get it before winter. Bugs are active in the summer when it's warmer. Bugs are less reactive in the winter when it's colder. So to try to get this stuff purchased on the way and then installed by winter is kind of our goal. We've worked with city insurance along with Grand County PUDs. Currently today, we don't know what we're going to receive in it. So it's still up in the air. And you know, maybe we're not, it's kind of a big if right now. We don't know what it's going to be.
Still waiting for the insurer, for the insurance to come through as far as what will be covered as well as working with PUD on what, if anything, they will cover.
So we're requesting, asking specifically Chris, begging you to move forward so we can get this equipment ordered and then installed here, hopefully before winter time.
Questions? I'll move to There is a surge suppressor that
I believe
Is part of the purchase?
Yes, I was, I think we talked about it in the prior
Because I believe the PUD, you know. Yeah.
Yeah, I know where you're going, Chris.
Yeah, okay.
I'll move to approve the repair contract.
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second?
Yeah.
Yep, he just did. Don and I.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Chris, thanks you very much.
Okay, next up, we have a public hearing. One that you've all been waiting for for the Western Avenue Vacation. Will be presented by Mr. Bosso.
Actually, Corey.
I'm just going off the pitch.
No, it's So we have a request to vacate Western Avenue for its full and for the entire length between Broadway and Milwaukee Avenue. It was dedicated to the city with the Milwaukee Industrial Plat in nineteen fifty-two. And our development review manager is tasked with presenting the staff report to you. Corey Day.
Good evening. Yeah, we're talking about Western Avenue. I'm sure everybody knows where it is. I do have some exhibit. I didn't prepare a slide deck so we go through. All the information is is in your staff report that I provided. Essentially, Mr. Holmesley and Holmesley Properties has asked us to vacate the entirety of the right-of-way. The right-of-way itself contains city-owned utilities consisting of twelve hundred and twenty-five feet of eight-inch water main, cast iron water main, four fire hydrants, and seven hundred feet, give or take, of three-inch pressure effluent sewer. Western Avenue has not been built to city and Moses Lake standards. It is still a gravel street. You'll find in your, I guess, real quickly, I just want to state that I understand that there was some there's an additional packet of information that was disseminated this morning. Everything I'm going to talk about tonight was was presented through staff, and by staff, I mean planning, public works, water, sewers, streets, engineering, fire. All of those staff members did not have an opportunity to see this information. We're going off of strictly what was presented originally by Mr. Holmesley. Another thing I want to point out, there were some discussions back and forth with Mr. Holmesley about the the right-of-way vacation itself, and we both wanted to be very clear that this is a vacation request only. There is no additional right-of-way being proposed as part of this action. It is simply as it states for us to vacate the roadway itself. See, when it comes to water, sewer, and stormwater, there's been some opportunity for staff to respond and and give their opinions and concerns and just basically compartmentalize each one of their concerns for this vacation. The the sewer infrastructure itself does not extend the full distance of Broadway. However, the adjoining properties which are owned by Mr. Holmesley as well do have covenants on them. We have, we have a couple of covenants on these, on this road. One will require full width construction of the road, water and sewer to be installed, services to each lot. The trick, it would also would require sewer to be designed and built in Broadway, which we do, we don't have at this time. Broadway does not have sewer in this location. I didn't get the measurements, but quite a few feet in in both directions. The other would be half-streets to start typical covenants that we have put from most, most part for just their half of of the road itself. When we're talking sidewalks, planar strips, full width, sixty feet. Let's see. I believe the names of those are the Cooper Home short plat, as well as the Aiden Commercial Binding Site Plan, that those were originally signed under. Couple of things to consider that in regards to the water, sewer, and storm infrastructure, that if it were to be vacated, then all infrastructure would have, will be required to be put into a utility easement for both maintenance and access. It would also become the city's liability itself to do any repair on that private property. So if this were to be vacated, it, the vacation itself goes back to each adjacent property owner. It doesn't stay as a road at all. It just gets absorbed by those parcels. The property owner would then either allow those easements, or we would have no choice but to move those somewhere else with an easement. We would have no, no access to them whatsoever. Streets themselves, we we had some discussions with Moses Lake School District. The department, the Transportation Director stated that they do not currently use Western because of the condition. So if it were to be constructed in any way, which would help them, they they would like to use it for Midway and possibly Frontier in that regard. Another main concern for the Streets Department was network connectivity to the Guff and Echols neighborhood to the north there, as you can see. They have very limited access that direction. Most is to the north, and when our city activities in that area, I think everybody knows Dogwood Street, it closed that down. It's very difficult for those folks to get out. So there were some concerns with connectivity in that route. The other thing to consider is that with no right-of-way proposed as a part of this vacation, staff had to consider that it would just go away. There's no assurances of any way, of any, of any type that that a future right-of-way would be built or that it would be maintained open. At this time, it it's simply being asked to be vacated where we would no longer own and have the ability to maintain that road or where it goes. We do have design dollars. And the city had design dollars for twenty twenty-four to construct or to begin design for Western Avenue in its entirety. We paused that design. We're currently at thirty percent. We paused that design when the vacation request itself was proposed. So the monies were moved to twenty twenty-five. So I guess, you know, in summary, and you have all my information there, we also received a letter from Fire. I don't necessarily need to read it in its entirety, but the City Moses Lake Fire Department had some some access concerns if that right-of-way were to just go away. And you've had that information itself. There's some traffic counts included in there as part of the exhibits. Those traffic counts were done in January with school and section, just to give you an idea of how those folks in Guff and Echols move around in and out. As you can see, Western Avenue itself, the majority of the traffic is coming in and turning around and going right back out. At this time, obviously, Mr. Holmesley's business is there. That's where, as he indicated in his, his paperwork, that's, that's the majority of the of the traffic at this time, but we did hear from some citizens. I don't, they didn't provide anything in writing, but but I, we have heard that there are some concerns or folks have been wanting, we got the road into fifty, so the the folks that live in there were hoping it would get paved eventually as well. So in a nutshell, staff's recommendation or staff's concerns were the condition of Western as it sits. If it is not vacated, staff would love to move forward with development of the road. There are some concerns with the road, and they're all legitimate. It is, it is tough in the wintertime when we have to maintain it in the condition it's in. So I guess with that, if if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer. I guess with that, if, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Fancher?
Just, just in clarification, so, uh, parcel number one-one-zero-one-eight-nine-zero-zero-zero, I believe, that's an undeveloped parcel, correct? It's not plotted?
That's correct.
Okay, um, so with this vacation, I guess, I guess it's got frontage on Milwaukee, right?
Yes, sir, it does.
And a little bit on Ivy. I'm just thinking about plotting, um, that, the future for, for road.
There is one on the, across the street, and I don't have the parcel number in front of me, but it comes to a point there. Um, that one may have, I, I don't know what the frontage requirements are of, of right of way, but if that's what you're getting to is a property.
Well, I'm just trying to think about the future, um, the future development of the property, which I know that's not what we're here to talk to you, but road continuity, water, sewer, all that stuff in the futures is critical. The other parcel, the, the other thing I want to, uh, just bring up, and then we can open the public. Unless somebody else has some others is, um, and you made a point about underserved for sewer and water. One of the biggest challenges, again, not only my counsel hat, where my other hat of, of selling and promoting, this area is really difficult. So first of all, I commend Howard for trying to, trying to make things happen down there. But, but across Broadway is not served with sewer either. And I guess for, for part of, of the, the thought here, and, and one of my concerns always was Western is so low. So even taking sewer down Western to get at some point through Broadway to the other side to serve, I don't know if we can meet. I mean, it probably has to be really expensive sewer. It probably needs to, and I, and I don't know where all the right of ways are, if we have any to the north, um, through C Street or any of that stuff, but probably not, never connecting Broadway again. Is that true?
So, for everything we've looked at for additional connection, C Street, and again, we didn't dive too deep into it because it wasn't part of the proposal.
I just think, uh, straight across the way is another underserved area, and it's tough. So I guess, just thinking about that, I just wanted to, some clarification before we open it up and, and talk through it.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Lomardi?
Um, thanks for putting everything together. Um, I thought it was pretty complete. Um, for the public, um, you mentioned, uh, development of the road. So, um, most people can understand a repairing of a road. If the city was going to develop this road, what is the cost on that? And what does that in, include?
Uh, I, I don't have any cost estimates at this time. That would have to be probably dove in pretty good. Brian with engineering, I guess, would have to kind of look at the cost, but it would include full street width, sixty feet with sidewalk.
Really long street.
Pardon me?
Really long road. So I was just curious, Brian, you want to take a shot?
I don't know the actual dollar numbers off the top of my head, but like Corey mentioned, if it was built out, it's full community standard build-up, curb gutter, sidewalk, the whole nine yards. So it's not that we're cutting any corners, anything. It's a full, the full package deal.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, I mean, I don't even know the footage off the top of my head. Roughly to pave roads, about four million dollars a mile. I don't think that's a quarter mile, but.
It's close, but not, it's just.
Close, a little less, yeah. So I mean, we can all do the rough number in our head.
But it's for the public to know what it would cost, that's all.
That, that doesn't include replacing water or sewer.
No, it does not.
And.
It's just, just.
That's why I was asking for the whole.
Yeah.
Yeah, that time you get the utilities and everything.
Half a million.
And, and just to clarify as well, the, the reason why, um, I brought up the covenants is those covenants would, would require those additional property owners that are adjacent to you, was the agreement that was entered with the city to participate financially in the construction of the road. And of course, the property that's not developed, when they were to go to develop, they would have, um, some participation in those as well, so.
Would that mean that the, uh, city's back in the lending business again if we, uh, enter that route?
I think there's more than one way to, to do that, Catherine. I, we talked about that originally, but.
Thank you.
Did you have something, Rob?
Yeah, there, so there's already covenants there that would require, I, I think, as you know. Um, uh, Corey, could you tell us, uh, like, if, if we were to pave that road, how much, uh, what percentage of the road would be paid for by the existing covenants? And by future covenants if these properties were to.
Sure, um, and you have the covenants map in your packet, so you can kind of follow along the, the, what I'll call the Western portion. Um, that is the one that carries the full width cost in the covenant, so the property owners would be on, would be required to pay the full width of that to that point. Adjacent would be half width, so just off of segmenting this into pieces, again, it's a thirty thousand foot view when you get into crunching numbers. Approximately forty-five percent at this time, looking at the length of the road, would be attributed to the covenants.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, uh, we do have a public hearing portion of this, uh, so I will open it up for public testimony. There, there is no restriction on who can testify for this, Catherine, correct? Thank you.
Be voting?
Read the options.
Way, Moses Lake. Um, I'm, I'm representing Mr. Holmesley. Um, I, I, I'm the senior project manager for Western Pacific Engineering and Survey. So my experience with this property goes back a long way. I used to work for the City of Moses Lake as a planner, and I can remember back when Mr. Holmesley started to redevelop this property, and maybe just a little bit of history. This, this, what, as, as Ms. Ramsey said, this, um, was plotted nineteen fifty-two, is the, the, the Milwaukee Industrial Short Plat. Um, there was an active, an, an active rail line that went between these, these parcels, um, that's since closed down. Uh, the rail doesn't serve the property anymore, and so as things change, so does the use of the property, and Mr. Holmesley is, has certainly worked very hard on, on that. But back to my, um, to the, the history of this project, or, or my experience with this project, it wa, it was due to the parking issue. Um, as, as Aime Gymnastics grew, and then the, the, the daycare was, was developed and parking was required. It was always a, a, a challenge, um, to, to find enough parking for this, and as, as uses expand, that, that certainly has, has continued. Parking is an issue. Um, with that, that plat, there were two streets that were, were dedicated. At the same time, there was Western and there's Milwaukee. Both have, have sixty feet of, of, of right of way that were dedicated for, for the city. So I just, just want you to keep Milwaukee i- in your head. Is to that's, and that's, that's a road that exists. Um, if, if, if I was driving a, a school bus or a, or a fire truck, I think I'd probably take Milwaukee. Part of Milwaukee's paved. Um, and Milwaukee also has a sweeping curve that goes up the hill onto, onto Ivy, rather, is Western, where it ties into Milwaukee. That, that would not meet current city standards for, for design, because it's not a, 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 a perpendicular connection. Um, so that, that would not meet, um, current standards. Um, in the, in, in the comments, there were some concerns about, um, about the uses that are adjacent to Milwaukee. In, in the past, um, this property was used as warehousing. There was Brotherton Seed that was on Milwaukee. They, they sent, sold that property. They, they were bought out by a, a larger corporation, so they, they no longer have their, their seed operation on, on, on Milwaukee. Uh, there's concerns about trucks unloading and forklifts and, and, and that type of thing, and I don't know if, if there's still that, that type of thing going on there, but if, if it is, it's, it's because the city has, is, is allowing it to happen because it is a, a, a city street that would be used for that. Um, now, there's, there's some of those similar concerns that Mr. Holmesley has for Western, because the, the buildings on the southeast end of, of, of Western are very close to, to right of way, to what's been dedicated. Um, buildings are, are, are there, and, and we are kind of stuck with, with the buildings as, as they are where the right of way is. Um, trying to make the best of it. There's a, there's a, a, a basement in part of the Aime Gymnastics building, is that correct, Todd? Yeah. And so with, with building Western to city standards, that, that would take away the access to that, that, that basement for, for, for vehicles, um, that type of thing. There was talk about sewer in, 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 uh, in Western, and all of the buildings are, have access to, to sewer. There is frontage. There is sewer in Western Avenue, um, that can be connected to, with all of the buildings. As was mentioned, there is no, no sewer in, in Broadway. Um, the, the, the sewer line ends south of the railroad tracks in, in Broadway, and, and it ends north of, of North Forty. There's many storage across from North Forty, and then there's those apartments, and, and that's kind of where, where sewer ends. Um, and just past experience with that section, there's, there's been people that have looked at property there, um, on, on, on Broadway, and the lack of, of, of sewer has, has kept um, some development from happening, and it's, and, uh, there's, there's definitely some, some difficulty to overcome to uh, put sewer in, in, in Broadway. Um, there was a question about the cost. I can share some projects that we've worked on recently. One was L K Q uh, by the, by the port, and, um, they had to put water, put a, a water line in, in Tinlow Road, about twenty-two hundred feet of a water line, and they had to, um, tear a part of the street to do that, and that, that came to about one point three million dollars. That's just put a water line in an, an, an existing street. That's, that's no, no sidewalks. Um, that's no, no sewer lines. That's not building a whole road. That's one point three million for, for a water line and, and repatching the road. So, so Mr. Holmesley does own the, the vacant property to the, to the north. There, there's approximately ten acres. And is it, as was mentioned, you know, what's before you tonight is just the vacation of, of, uh, of Western Avenue, but I can tell you that, um, Western Pacific has had several conversations with Mr. Holmesley about the, the development of of that, that vacant parcel, and there, there are plans in that to build a, a road that would connect from Milwaukee to Broadway. There's also an, an alternate plan. Um, Mr. Fancher talked about C Street tying into Broadway. It was years ago that the city actually did on right of way to Broadway, but that was, was sold. Um, so that's, that's, I mean, not that it couldn't happen, but it'd be more, more difficult now, but, but one conceptual drawing that we put together would tie this new street into C Street, and then C Street could continue, but there, there, there'd be some work to, to make that, that happen. Um, so in the future, there is a plan, um, to build a, a, a new street that would serve some commercial uses, some residential uses, that Mr. Holmesley is proposing for that, that vacant property. And back to, to who would, who would, would pay for the road, that would be Mr. Holmesley for the new road, and also for the improvement of, of Western. He owns the, the property on, on, on both sides. Um, typically, it's, that's who would, who would end up building, and, and, and as we, and, and, and if he did plat that, and Western wasn't vacated, we would have to, or, or he would have to, to build, um, build Western as it is now. I think that that's all, all, all I can say about this. Um, I could go on a little further maybe, but I don't think that I need to, um, certainly would, um, ask the council to pick option number two, to request an ordinance to move forward, um, with the vacation of, of Western Avenue. I'll answer any questions if you, if you have any. I'll try to.
Any questions? I have a question, Mr. Levitt. We were presented with this packet of information, which I greatly appreciate that. Um, I've had a little bit of time to digest this and know quite a bit about what we're talking about here tonight. Um, but I did want to draw your attention to this map specifically.
Okay.
Which is a conceptual site drawing of the roughly seven acres Mr. Holmesley owns today. And there is in another road drawn that would tie into where the existing entrance to Western Avenue is to Broadway. Um, is that the plan as, as of today, moving forward with the development of the property? Is that what we're, to understand what happened in the future?
Well, so what our, our, our goal is to do this in, in phases to, um, to, to vacate Western, first of all. Um, so that, that some of the, the development of, of the existing property can continue. Um, that'll create some revenue stream for the development of the, of the, of the vacant parcel. Um, as, as, as things are, are right now, um, yeah, that, so, so, yeah, so, so the first step would, would be to, to vacate Western and, and then move forward with the, um, with the development of the vacant piece. And I know the, you know, there's some concern about the access, but again, I would, I would draw your attention back to Milwaukee. So even if Western is vacated before the new Western, as it's shown on this drawing, it's the new Western Avenue, I mean, it may not be called that, but there would still be access for fire to Guff and Echols and school buses if they decide to go up that hill on, on Milwaukee to Ivy and that, that sort of thing. And as far as the, the, the existing water and sewer, there, there wouldn't be any problem with creating an easement for the city to, to be able to access that and, um, to maintain it as they, as they would now. Um,
Now, from a, to Mr. Fancher's point about sewer specifically moving through there, this is actually probably a better route for that, because then you're not at a lower elevation, or is it? Or where it's still lower?
So the line could be extended to.
It could be further.
Yeah, but it, but it would have to be, be lifted up to, of course, there's a force main, but, yeah, but it would, it, it would have to be lifted up to Broadway, but it would go nowhere. It would just dead end. Yeah.
No, it's, it just was an observation for the future. It's, it's, it's not there right now, anyway, so. Um, um, back to your comment, Dan, on, on the vaca, let's talk vacated Western for a second.
Okay.
Um, on public access, you made a comment for buses and, and fire and whoever. Um, and I'm thinking of other, like binding site plans and stuff where you have private roads and, and things like that. I mean, that's the theory of those is, is to create flexibility, but still provide public access. I guess, and now I'm going to look over both directions. Can that happen?
So this, this, so this wouldn't be a, 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 a binding site plan? Yeah, right? Yeah.
What are you, what are you talking to me? Or Catherine?
I'm talking to somebody.
Okay, I wasn't sure you were looking at.
And talk about through, I, just through access. Because once you, once, in, in theory, once you vacate, and it goes to the ownership of the new ownership group, uh, you, you, that's my concern. You made a comment, Dan, about still having that access available.
Well, well, access to.
But how would you memorialize that?
So, I, I can answer that. So if council chose to vacate all of Western Avenue, staff would be looking for what holdbacks or reservations you would want. Obviously, easements for water and sewer, but also, that was one of staff's questions. Do you want to retain public access easement along Western Avenue, so that once it's improved, then it would be another access onto Broadway for that area up above? That is constricted as far as alternate routes.
And it could be, I mean, potentially approved and moved, meaning plans change and roads change.
Well, and, and to, to clarify the, the comment that I made, I, I didn't necessarily mean to imply that there'd be public access through the vacated Western, but that there would still be access through, through Milwaukee Street, which is a, a dedicated city street, which is just the opposite, just the other side of, of the railroad tracks. So only just a few hundred feet away. And as I said, I, I actually drove it this morning, and, and it's in, in better shape than. And as I said, I I actually drove it this morning and and it's in in better shape than than Western is.
If if I may, just quickly, if I may, I'm trying to figure out off the map what we're if if we're talking about the drawing that shows what I'll call New Western as it exits to the east onto the ingress egress to Broadway, it appears to show using a couple hundred feet of Western, what we call Western now. If we were to vacate, I I don't, I'm not an expert, but I don't know what the viability would be to go from a city street to a private street to then be able to access a state highway. We might want to reserve that front portion. Once we vacated, then we have the same situation that we've somebody mentioned at C Street where we vacated it and now you can't get out to Broadway. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'd I'd actually thought about that a little bit. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But 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 with the so with the plating of that vacant parcel and and also there's the property that fronts um Broadway that's um that the title company's there and 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 yeah, and also Mr. Holmesley owns some property that goes there. So with with the plating of this property, there'll there'll be another chance for the city to take a bite of of the apple. So some of those concerns, if 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 Western is completely vacated with the plating, there 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 will be another opportunity for the city um to require that that be rededicated if if you will to provide that that access.
So Dan, can I clarify that? So uh I think one of staff's concerns was the difficulty potentially in getting another access out onto Broadway because that's a state highway. So if council were to totally vacate Western Avenue as proposed, the city would lose control or ownership of that access. So when you say another bite at the apple, where would that alternate access egress and ingress onto Broadway?
Well, so 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 another bite of the apple would would be that that the the plating process of the vacant parcel. The city could require through that plating process that there be that that access.
And have you talked to Wash Dot at all about the viability of getting another access?
No.
Your Honor, uh, one thing I want to point out is I think um several of us are referring to a document that didn't make it into the packet. So the public doesn't have an opportunity to know what we're talking about. Um I personally got this late this afternoon, like around four or five. Um and then as soon as I got it, I distributed it to staff. So we're trying to react to this uh this document with this proposed development on it with just a couple hours notice and public has no access to this document that we're referring to. So I would recommend that we be given some time to digest this and figure out how this would work with the proposed vacation, because what's before you right now is uh a street vacation proposal with no alternate road. That's what's before you tonight. But what we've been given this afternoon is a is a possible alternate road.
Mr. Scott?
It 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 seems to me that in in just looking at the original Milwaukee um or um Western Avenue, that it's a road that does not serve that piece of property very well at all. Um particularly where it gets really close to the the properties down below. It doesn't allow for more parking that I know is is a need, which is even exceeds the code, but is a need for for what's going on there. I would be opposed to participating in paving Western. And in in my mind, it's kind of a road that does not serve that piece of property well at all. Obviously, if if it gets developed, um their road will have to have some access to it. So, I mean, i- if there's a a road to be built, it would seem to me that it would be better that that piece of property would be better served if that road was actually designed with the development of that property in mind. So I I don't think there'd be much point in paving uh Western as it exists today. Um so to to vacate that and allow some, you know, make some other changes up above would make a lot of sense to me.
Mr. Myers?
I was just gonna say that maybe we should see if there's any other public testimony and then decide if we're going to continue the hearing, which I think we're kind of leaning towards.
Yep.
There any other public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Levitt. Sure, Mr. Preston.
My name's Bruce Preston. I'm a tenant in one of the buildings down there on Western Avenue. And I everybody's kind of getting off on a tangent on access. Well, there's going to be full commercial access for everybody that's using that property. And right now there is sewer, there's fire hydrants, there's fire sprinklers, the daycare. I mean, there's hundreds of cars in and out of there. I don't know, how many, how many, five hundred cars a day come in and out of there between aim gymnastics and the daycare and everybody else there. We have semi deliveries in and out with what we're doing. And I think the access thing is not an issue. It's going to have access because there's going to be use of that property. And that's just all I had to say about it.
Great, thank you, Bruce. Mr. Fancher?
I I I I'm I'm all on board here pretty much. My concern is Broadway, again, I know how the state behaves and I I don't want I don't want that public access i- if you do need it in the future to be gone and then have to go back to Wash Dot and they say, figure out how to use Milwaukee. I'm talking about Milwaukee on the other end that you don't own. No, well, I'm just saying, no, just you can you can, but that's my concern.
I don't know what map they're talking about. I'm sorry. My name is Lynette May. Been living on Ivy Street for forty two years. Out of that forty two years, I was told within ten years that road would be paved and maintained by the city. I'm still there forty two years later and it has not been paved and maintained. It is harder than you think to get into my neighborhood anytime there's an event. Third Avenue, Frontier, Farmers Market, you name it. I have numerous times had to call the fire department and they've had to go all the way down Broadway, come down Third Avenue to get to where we are at. So for forty two years, we have been begging to have this. I don't see Milwaukee ever working as a freeway because of the, I know they're saying that they do not wear those warehouses anymore, but when I can drive down that road and I get stopped by a forklift, it is being used. That Milwaukee Milwaukee is not a good idea. Western Avenue would be amazing to have it paved, have it accessible for the police, the fire department and the neighboring people who live there so that we don't have to go down Third Avenue or Dogwood during the peak hours during the summers. Again, forty two years, I'm begging the city council to please rethink giving up this property that they own and that they can make our lives easier and that neighborhood amazing. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Holmesley? Did you have a comment?
Hi, I'm Howard Holmesley, live in Moses Lake, own the property and responsible for the petition to or request to vacate. But two of the tenants, Bailey Cole and Courtney Nelson from Aim Gymnastics are here and they patiently been waiting, so I would propose that they can make their comments first and then maybe they can.
Absolutely. Ladies, would you like to come up?
Okay, my name is Courtney. I'll just be speaking for Bailey and I for Aim Gymnastics. Um for one, I wasn't here in nineteen fifty two when the road was there, but I have been on that road about six times every single day and every season for twenty years and have been promised multiple times that something would happen that that road. So my point being here was great. We're here. We're one step closer. And then hearing back and forth all these ideas, it's been twenty years to just get to the point of ideas. So my request would be to the city council to please get past the point of just ideas and and make something happen. I mean, I have ideas of what, you know, what the lady just said about, you know, vacate or not vacate, we just got to do something. Like I am getting the brunt. Our phone call is getting, our phone number is getting the brunt of all of this. And in every single day, like I said, every single season. And so um we have a lot of kids in there. It's just growing. Our idea is to keep children safe. I I personally don't think an arterial road would be a good solution just with the amount of kids. Um and it's just growing. I mean, we said five hundred kids a day or five hundred cars a day. I would guess more. We have over a thousand just in our location alone coming out of there. And that's multiple times a day with those children drop off pickup. Um we're looking for a lot of traffic, not not more traffic. People are flying by that do use that on a um flying by that road as a pass through. That it's pretty darn scary when we're and rocks are flying because people are flying through there. Like we said, the majority is coming in and then turning right back out, but you do have those ones trying to use it as a pass through that are flying rocks through there. Um we've lost business multiple times, people, and it's been on Facebook even the last year. Um you know, we're just not going to sign up there because we can't get if the kids are bouncing in and out, getting concussions on the way to drop them off to school. Not necessarily good business business practice for us and especially when we can't do much about it. So I'm just here to say, it's been twenty years, been twenty years of arguments. You know, city manager's gone or waiting for a new one. That argument's been used. I don't can't even count more more times than I know of, that more mayors, well, it's next, it's been passed down the road. So I'm just begging that we make something happen. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fancher?
I just wanted to hear Howard's comment about DOT.
Okay, Howard?
Okay, so I'm back. Questions?
DOT.
I never thought about it.
I thought that's what you were coming to.
No, in in the sense, it it never had crossed my mind that an existing right of way might conceivably go away, and I'm not sure that it would because it goes from public to private. The the right of way is going to remain where it is. It's not going to change its location. Uh so I don't see a DOT issue, but I'll be the first to admit I have zero experience dealing with them. So if that is a potential issue, it's something that we would want to to discuss, yeah.
Before.
Well, i- it's something that can be resolved. I- it it might need to be, it might need to be something specifically resolved, but it's it's something that can be resolved. And the plat map that, I'm I'm sorry, the city manager mentioned, city staff has had that for at least twelve months. And that's something Western Pacific drew a lot a long time ago. And there was quite a bit of discussion that seems to revolve around an alternate location for Western Avenue, which I don't quite understand. I don't see a compelling need for the city to have Western Avenue as a arterial or a through street. There is Milwaukee and I'm respectful of the lady uh from Ivy Street and personally, I'll always do everything I can to be a good neighbor. But Western Avenue has the same issues that Milwaukee does in that the lots, particularly the Hanson Warehouse is built to a zero setback and it's a warehouse with the roll up doors that open directly onto Western Avenue, forklift traffic, semi traffic. The same issues will come up if Western were to be developed, just like they would come up with on Milwaukee. And as Dan said, Milwaukee is a more natural egress point because the road is a gentle curve, not a slightly greater than a ninety degree turn to transition off of Milwaukee on to Western Avenue, so.
Hey, hold on, Howard. We got some questions, I think, or comments. Mr. Myers?
I was just waiting for public comments to end so we can move on.
Okay. Right. Councilor Martinez?
Well, I I, what I'm hearing is, since we didn't, we don't have information about a right of way or public access that we need to talk about this some more. Because we would, we don't want to abandon our our right of way, just as it was mentioned before, we vacated C and now look at. So we don't have access, um public access. So um how do how do we do that if council is is uh leaning towards continuing the conversation? Because we don't have this this thought of a right of way.
Yeah, I I understand that. I so I was just looking at our options here as they were presented to us and I think option two is probably where we're sitting right now, uh which would be to continue the hearing. So we have some more time to gather this information. Howard, hopefully you understand what our concern is there with the the access to Broadway.
Just one more comment. The proposed we're calling it New Western Avenue up on the hill, for want of better terms, is a conceptual drawing that, as I said, it's it's at least twelve months. I think it's closer to eighteen months old. That's something that is done because Howard has the authority right now to say, we can do that. There is another proposal that's at least six months old. Again, city staff has it and there's been discussions with them. And in fact, the response was overwhelmingly positive, and that is to extend C Street behind, basically between the back of North Forty and the school and sweep around between Grant County Title and North Forty and hit Broadway at that point. The fire department loves it. The school district loves it. The church loves it because it gives that whole area much more. It's just, it's simpler and easier access. That is going to involve work on my part and some things are going to have to fall in place. Preliminary discussions with the owner of the Grant, the Aiden property, uh discussions with the school district, with the church are overwhelmingly positive, and everyone has agreed to work together to try to make it work, but that's all, that's all we have at this point, so.
Okay. Councilmember Lombardi, did you have a question or comment?
Um he addressed it with North Forty. I was thinking the same thing. Thank you.
Mr. Fancher?
My my question would be the same thing, that that's created another access point. I think that's that's probably my only my largest concern here is figuring out how to not handcuff ourselves with no access. Well, and and it's only because of some experience I've had with DOT on other projects and their control of those points. It's a case in study. There was some issues down on Marina. You know, I'm not Marina, but Broadway by Marina down there with some issues down there when when they tried to get some new access points. Not not that they wouldn't. It was about where and how much.
So, uh you know, maybe Dan might have some knowledge on it. I I guess it just never crossed my mind that an existing access might go away simply because it's switched from public to private. There's private accesses all up and down Broadway. The other thing I might comment on, because there was some talk about utilities, the eight inch utility or storm, sorry, the eight inch water main would may remain city property and there would be an easement for access. The sewer only comes partway up Western from Ivy or Milwaukee, and that was actually put in by the previous owners of the Western building before I bought it. And so it serves Western. I just recently put in a new lift stage. And so it serves western, I just recently put in a new lift station for the Hanson Building, because it was still on septic. And that could be extended up old western at this point, as needed to serve my future developments. But the proposal, and I believe that we found common ground with city staff on that, is city would maintain ownership of the water main, and Holmesley Properties would assume ownership of the force main. That's my understanding, so I don't know if that clears anything up with that.
If I could just clarify for the record, what Mr. Holmesley's talking about with these other proposals, he's correct, we have seen them. The access point from what he's calling New Western to existing Western was the, was the contention that didn't allow us to get to this point previously. As specifically, as I discussed with Mr. Holmesley, this vacation does not include, and he made it very specific, it does not conclude, include any proposals. That was Mr. Holmesley's wish. So I just wanna clarify, because staff has had conversations, but not on this regard.
Yes, I, I acknowledge that, and I, I'll provide some clarification, at least as far as I understand it, that, that, that was a result of having gone back and forth, back and forth, back and forth so many times, that I think there was an intention to simplify it and say, okay, let's just do this in the order. Now, based on the, what my understanding of this, we can continue this tonight, however, because we have a couple of questions. One would be now that everybody's seen this, and we all have this, which I agree, Howard, you've given this to people before. Um, the question, I think, for the council is, is there a desire to have some sort of connectivity? And then it sounds like there's a major concern, which is in my mind too, as far as giving up the, the access to Broadway, and then being able to get it back when that time comes. Because based on this drawing, what I would see happening is that there would be a vacation that would occur with the condition that there'd be right-of-way put back, I'm assuming, based on this drawing. And then Mr. Holmesley's gonna have to do a number of things with that property, rezoning, block consolidation, possibly, uh, planned unit development, that sort of thing. But really, for everybody's best interest to make that happen, we wanna make sure that that access is still there to that street, Broadway, right? So is that kind of framing things properly?
And I don't want us to forget Road C's potential, like, w- w- well, that, that would be my favorite. Figure out, you know, and I agree, it's not gonna happen like that.
Absolutely.
But, but that would be my favorite, because I think it does create lots of benefits, including better opportunity to selfishly get sewer across Broadway at a better elevation. Meaning, meaning that's much higher up to be the sewer, to keep the sewer in the ground.
And, and to answer one of the questions, unrelated, but, but related, uh, Grant County Title Sewer goes behind North Forty and somehow connects. I'm not sure how it works, but there is sewer.
Right, so my, yeah. My thought is, is there's, there's an access right now, th- this is where you get, this is where I'm, as we give them up, the state isn't liking to give them back. So there is one on Milwaukee, there is one on Western right now, we vacate. I, I just, we wanna dot all the i's and cross the t's. I understand, and I hear everybody about wanting to get that road, I don't want the calls anymore.
You don't want what?
I don't want the calls anymore either. We wanna get to the end, but I think, I would love to have it brought back, you know, the next meeting, with a couple of these access issues done, so we can make a decision.
Yeah, i- is there an acknowledgement up there? I mean, I, this purpose of the vacation, I understand this, as long as everybody else understands this, I think that's a good starting point to begin with, is, you know, the need for additional parking. Again, I, I foresee completely that there's going to be a rezone, right? Is that fair to say, Howard, that that would be in the works?
Mm-hmm.
So there's quite a long process that's gonna have to go on, once we get past this first step, folks, so. Um, just as long as some of those things, I think, can be memorialized, you know, that we're understanding what his desires are, and that they match our desire for infill development and those sorts of things, and affordable housing. Um, I think we can shape this into something that works for everybody.
I, I would, I would again reiterate that the undeveloped property on, up on the hill, as we refer to it, cannot be developed without a road being built that is gonna offer that connection.
Sure.
I don't understand the process you have to go through, or what you're proposing to go through. But my request would be, if you put any type of conditions on it, like, I kinda hear you saying, we want an alternate roadway. I would like some type of understanding that once the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, Western is going to be vacated. Because I've been hamstrung on development that I want to do for two-plus years now, because I'm constantly being told, well, we need to resolve Western Avenue first.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, and I, I'm hearing what Mark's saying, and agreeing that, yeah, we, we need to get these questions answered soon, and then we'll, we'll go.
So, I guess.
The, the biggest loser, if, if there wasn't access, is you.
Correct.
I mean, then, no.
Correct.
Okay, so I mean, that, that's, you know, a discussion, you know, and careful what you're wishing for, that, that.
This city's spending a hundred thousand dollars a year maintaining Western Avenue. I'm willing to take over ownership, put in this private street and parking area that is needed to serve my tenants, and future development will happen when it happens.
Mr. Scog, did you have some?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I don't have any problem saying let's vacate it, you know, give you a commitment that that can happen, and you can start making plans, and paying for engineering, and paying for development costs. Um, a- and it really boils down to, i- if, if you got a, if that got vacated, and you were denied access to that now, you would have a whole bunch of egg on your face.
I would have a major problem.
So, so I mean, I gue- I guess it would be, uh, if you wanted to make it conditional on you saying, yes, I have access, or if you wanna look at that before something officially gets vacated.
Dan has given.
Fortunately for us, they've, we can elect to just continue this until the next meeting. And I think staff's got some questions to help us answer. That, and Howard and Dan, you understand the nature of the question?
Reasonable.
Okay.
Not, 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 not two years from now, next, next, and then, and thirty days?
No, it would be in two, yeah. Twice a month, sir, so, um.
It's, any.
You're good, comfortable.
Okay, I think actually I'm gonna need to do some formal things here first, before we get too far. Go ahead and close the public hearing, thank you, Howard, for your time, thank you, Dan, and everybody else. Thank you, Courtney. What's that? I know I still have to, there's a public hearing. I think I have to close the public hearing regardless, right? Oh, no, excuse me, I guess we're continuing. What time is it? Okay. Would anybody, we, we don't need a motion then, we just continue it, is that right? Thank you, okay, sorry.
I'll move that we continue hearing to the next meeting, provide direction to staff.
Second half.
Regarding the.
Do you wanna be specific? Yeah, okay.
Regarding the right-of-way or public access.
Okay.
Is that specific enough?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Was there a second?
No, we don't need one.
Oh, we don't.
Oh, we do, sorry, yes.
Again.
There was, there was a second, I'd second that.
My God, sorry, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Closed, motion passes, thank you. For your patience. All right, that concludes our business for the evening, uh, other than we do have staff reports.
Yeah, um, so thank you, council, for dedicating two full weekdays to the retreat a couple of weeks ago. I know you are busy people with day jobs and other responsibilities, so thank you for, uh, giving us that much time, but I think it was productive and worthwhile to hear from you what your priorities are, and visions and goals are. And, uh, from that, I do think we have some good direction to prepare the, the next twenty twenty-six budget, and I was very encouraged and inspired by it all, so thank you. Um, I would like to turn some time over to our Parks, Recreation and Cultural Services Director, Doug Kooz.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, I just wanted to bring up a couple items. Uh, we had a great event hosted by DM La this past Saturday, uh, the family picnic. Uh, it looked like it was really well-attended when I was there, lots of people getting burgers, having some great events, having some great fun out there in Nappell Park, so wanted to make sure I highlighted that for you. Uh, also wanted to remind you that this Friday, we will have the second of our summer concert series, we are having concerts every week through July twenty-fifth. So this Friday, last Friday, it was the Side Project, that was our first concert. Uh, this Friday will be Whiplash Rodeo, which is a popular country rock and classic tunes band. And then, since we don't have a meeting next week, I'll let you, I'll, I'll make a reminder now that we do have the Red, White and Boom event next Thursday on July third. Uh, and the two bands, we have two bands, we have multiple vendors gonna be there, food trucks, so on and so forth. I think we're at five vendors at the moment, um, and Mobile Recreation Unit will be there. We have the, uh, Dime Store Profits starting at six-thirty, and we have Lake City Blues playing at eight-thirty, then the fireworks at ten, all at the Amphitheater down at McCott. That's all I have for you.
Thank you, Doug, and staff, thank you, is that it? All right, uh, are we still doing, councilmembers?
Well.
Okay, council report, starting with Councilmember Myers.
Uh, I don't have anything to add, just that our regular scheduled board meeting for G, for Grant Transit was moved due to the Juneteenth holiday. So it's gonna be this Thursday at six-thirty.
Councilmember Martinez?
I just wanted to, uh, acknowledge that, uh, we did have the, um, delegation from Japan, Japanese Airlines, excuse me, um, here this week, and the port and the city, um, did, uh, have a little discussion and, uh, um, acknowledged Ja- Japanese Airlines for the history that they have with the city. Um, not just with the fountain, but, you know, you can see it kind of all over the city, so, um, we hope that they continue to be a part of Moses Lake as much as they can be. Uh, hopefully that'll grow.
Great, thank you, Deanna.
Yeah, um, I do have one thing.
I was gonna say.
I do have one thing, because I, I, I would like to try and, uh, clarify it for the pubet, public, whenever there is, uh, hot topic. Uh, including the fireworks that are on the third.
Yeah, you really like to stir it up.
I don't wanna stir it up, I just wanna make sure that people understand, Doug, if you can explain again for us. Um, and unfortunately, the TV news or, yeah, whoever it was, isn't here to hear this part.
The, the, the fireworks are on July third, not because we choose to have fireworks on July third, that is when we can get the fireworks company to come out and shoot fireworks off for us. Uh, if we had our choice, we would put them on the fourth, that's where we would like to have them. Uh, unfortunately, they go to the big cities, where they pay them big dollars to do bigger displays than what we can afford to do here in Moses Lake, uh, on the fourth, so they do not have pyrotechnic, uh, um, staff available to come here on the fourth. Uh, we are working, there is a local person that has approached me that says that they can do this for us, and they would be willing to do it on the fourth, so next year, I'm hopeful for the semi-quintcentennial, which I can't believe I remembered how to say that word on, off the top of my head. But for America's Two-Fifty, we will hopefully have them on the fourth, that is my goal. However, I've only had one conversation with this gentleman, so I don't want to say it's more than a fifty percent chance at this point. Um, but we will see where we go from here, and that's the conversations we're having.
That's good that we're gonna try and.
We, we try, we try every year, every year I ask, so.
And do you, um, oh, do you go out to other companies, or just this one?
We cannot find any other company that does them in Washington State. So I did look, uh, I called other companies, they're like, we don't go there. There's only one that will do it up in, I believe it's all of Oregon and all of Washington, it's Western Display.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate all the work that you've done, uh, to, to get us fireworks somewhere close to July fourth.
I mean, I don't work as hard as Chief Sands. Uh, and obviously, I'm not as smart as him, I'm just better looking.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Fancher?
I'll pass.
Thank you, Councilmember Lombardi. Okay, fine, Councilmember Scog. Great, you're up now, Vic, sorry, you're only about yourself.
I guess, gave me a few seconds to get together here, so, um, Municipal Airport, we're going to have a special study session tomorrow at seven-thirty AM, so, was hoping this meeting would go a little longer, and I'd just sleep over. Um, but, uh, and then as far as the port goes, um, the, uh, the, they had their hearing and their approval of the Industrial Development District, which actually includes the entire city of Mo- Moses Lake, um, and the, yeah, impressive, isn't it? And the one item that the, uh, analyst report, uh, put out was that, that highlighted there's a severe shortage of industrial zone, zoning properties and lots and so forth. So that will take care of that, I believe, to a certain extent. Um, and that's a big deal, if we're trying to get some big companies here. Um, putting everything together, three to five years, as opposed to, let's say, ten years down the road. And so there's companies right now, ready to sign paperwork, we might have some announcements six months from now. Um, the, uh, Japan Airlines visit, uh, was a huge success. Um, when I met with the port to kind of put it together, um, they, I didn't realize they'd be here for the entire day. Um, so one of the things that we did was, we had a morning session where they got a chance to look at old photos of their, what they contributed, and, uh, children, and, uh, participating and so forth. And then it was really nice for them to see the final product. Um, that was a big, big deal to them. Um, they wanted to thank the city for embracing them so much. They, I had, uh, one of the executives pulled me over and said, you folks have exceeded our expectations. And so it was one that's worked with Japanese on a consulting side many years back. Um, they're very, um, politically correct, they, they wanna make sure they say things right. But you, you also know from experience when they really mean it sincerely. Um, they're located right now in Phoenix, but our port actually offers a better package. And so, um, that's something that they're aware of, it's something that we know. Um, it's not just when, when the port people go to Japan to, to court and do business, it's all about relationships. And, um, many times, it could be three years down the road, uh, where you finally, uh, agree on something. And in other cases, you actually make connections with other companies after they hear how well you worked with them. And so, again, they were just, um, really ecstatic, we had a, a final lunch, um, at Enzo's, and, uh, they just were really, really, really happy. Uh, gift exchange was pretty impressive as well. So, um, Moses Lake held their own and did really, really well, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Victor. Deputy Mayor Madewell?
I don't have anything.
Okay, uh, I have a couple announcements on our Japanese theme, I appreciate that. Uh, the Sister City Exchange dates have been finalized, the students from the U S Moses Lake delegation, uh, will be going to Japan on the twenty-fifth of July, returning August the fourth. And our Japanese students will be here August the eleventh through the seventeenth, so they'll be here for some affair, which will be great. Um, also, I wanted to announce that the Yonozawa Sister City Committee is not doing a fundraising auction this year, as we have in prior years, just due to time constraints and other things. Um, but we all would like to let you know that we are gearing up for the forty-fifth anniversary of the program, which is next year, so, um, we're very excited to maybe actually get more students to participate, is my main goal, is we only have three delegates going this year. But, um, to try to get back to five and really make it a big deal, which just la- uh, adds to the list of things we have next year, which is the semi-quintcentennial, see, Doug, I practiced too. Uh, and World Cup will be in, in Washington State, so we'll have a busy year next year. But with that, that's all the announcements I have, Councilmember Martinez, did you have something?
I wanted to add that, although they're not doing the fundraiser auction, um, the students that are going. I wanted to add that, although they're not doing the fundraiser auction, um, the students that are going are selling, uh, snacks or popcorn, yes.
They're a very motivated group of, it's three students and an alternate, so there are four of them, and great, great families, so.
Yeah.
Really excited.
I think you can find that information on the Facebook page, because there is a Yonozawa Exchange Program Facebook page. I don't know the exact name of it, but you can probably find it.
It's on there, absolutely. Um, okay, at this point, we're going to go into executive session for thirty minutes to discuss. Uh, purchase or sale, real estate?
Your honor, how many minutes did you say?
Thirty?
Let's do ten.
Ten minute. You're salaried employee, so. Uh, with no business to follow, the meeting is adjourned, thank you.